Mike? Looks like they're gonna wanna start. Are we ready to go? Let me know when we're rolling.
Okay, I'm going to call the order, the October 16th City of Santa Fe Planning Commission meeting. We, um, this is, uh, as always, a hybrid meeting, so, um, we have folks joining from Zoom on the publicly available link on the agenda. First, with the pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Capen, could you help us with that?
Excuse me, Chair, uh, we forgot the roll call.
No, the roll, roll call happens after the pledge.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, uh, staff, if you could, uh, do the roll call.
Chair Smith, I mean Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Morondo?
Here.
Chair Morondo. Commissioner Rieland?
Here.
Commissioner Ca- Capen? Commissioner McReynolds?
Present.
Commissioner Barber?
Here.
And Commissioner Embry?
Here.
Your quorum chair.
Now move to the approval of past agenda. Do we have a motion to approve? It's admitted?
I make a motion.
Mr. Chair, just wanna remind you that, um, by approving the agenda, we are requesting that, uh, case 2025-111641372 Boylan Lane, 2743 Boylan Circle and 2745 Boylan Circle General Plan Amendment, along with case 2024-94611372 Boylan Lane, 2743 Boylan Circle, and 2745 Boylan Circle rezoning will be removed from the agenda. They will be coming back at later date.
Yes, thank you, staff, for the clarification. Can we consider that, uh, an approval of the agenda and roll call? Yes. Staff, if we could move to roll call?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Rieland?
Yes.
Commissioner Capen?
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds? Commissioner Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner Embry?
Yes.
We do not have anything on the consent agenda or, um, on the consent agenda, so we will move to approval minutes. We have, uh, staff, just as a clarification, do we have to make separate motions for the two minutes we have on the agenda? We have two different, I believe?
Mr. Chair, uh, yes. I believe there's only one on the agenda, though.
Ooh. Thank you. Okay. So, Steph, what I see is September 18th and October 7th, or October 2nd. But, uh, perhaps more importantly, the eight, the minutes for the 18th are not in the packet. Yeah, nee- actually neither are. So, um, perhaps, uh, this is a little simpler for us. I don't think we have any minutes to approve.
We postpone them to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yeah, we, yeah, we need a motion to reject the minutes, which you don't have in front of you, and then postpone to the next meeting.
Individually?
Um, no, that can be one motion.
Uh, go ahead. Uh, move to, uh, Chair, move to reject the, uh, minutes from September 18th, 2025, as well as October 2nd, uh, 2025, due to not having them available in the packet.
Second.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Embry?
Yes.
Commissioner Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner Rieland?
Yes.
Commissioner Capen?
Yes.
And Commissioner McReynolds?
Yes.
Staff, if that was a test to see if we reviewed the minutes, I, I think we passed.
You, you already made the motion. We need another motion? I thought they already made it. Okay, then, yeah, I'm taking another motion.
So, I'll make a motion to postpone the minutes from September 18th, 2025, and October 2nd, 2025, for the next commission meeting on November, November 6th, 2025?
Second.
Commissioner Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner Embry?
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
You need a verbal, yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Rieland?
Yes.
Commissioner Capen?
Yes.
Then, moving on to approval and finding that conclusion to law, we do not have any, uh, for, um, for today's meeting. And, uh, nor do we have anything on the consent agenda, uh, or old business, so we would, uh, move on to staff communications, uh, which is a, uh, presentation on governmental ethics and procedure by, uh, uh, staff's Assistant City Attorney Rebecca Monk Herman, Herman, who is, uh, maybe just connecting here at the podium.
Okay, um, if we have somebody in IT, if they could come out and give me a hand, that would be great. Okay, we're, we're almost ready. Um, so while, while they're doing that, I'll just, I'll introduce myself. My name is, um, Rebecca Mina Herman, um, for people who might not know me, um, I'm, uh, from the City Attorney's Office. I'm an Assistant City Attorney with the City of Santa Fe, um, and I, uh, work with the Land Use Department and the Planning Commission. Um, and so tonight, I'm gonna be giving a couple of presentations, um, since we have a lot of new commissioners. Um, this will be, you know, kind of just a refresher for the people that have been, been here for a while. Um, but we're gonna be talking about, um, uh, ethics rules, um, as they apply to the Planning Commission, and also the Open Meetings Act. Um, so I'm gonna try to go through, I'm gonna try to go through, you know, fairly, um, efficiently, just 'cause I know we've got a, a lot, um, happening tonight, but if there are questions, please do feel free to ask them. Um, okay, so first presentation is gonna be, um, ethics rules and, uh, inspection of public records. Um, so, uh, the City of Santa, the, uh, city's Code of Ethics applies to all governmental bodies, um, which includes the Planning Commission. The Santa Fe, uh, the Code of Ethics for the City of Santa Fe is, um, ju- generally, this is the underlying idea that, um, it's about fairness for everyone. Um, and so, uh, what our code says is, "The proper operation of a democratic government requires that public officials and public employees be independent, impartial, and responsible to the people; that governmental decision and policy be without conflicts of interest; that public office or employment not be used for personal gain; and that the public has confidence in the integrity of its government." Um, so this is the purpose and intent of the Santa Fe Code of Ethics. It's, um, comes from Section 1-7.3. This is all from the code. Um, uh, it's to fulfill the obligation imposed on, and sorry, it says governing body here, but it, impose, the obliga- um, as, um, basically an offshoot of the governing body, um, this would apply to this, this commission as well as a decision-maker in quasi-judicial matters, and also some legislative matters, as we'll be hearing later this evening. Um, but it's to fulfill the obligation imposed on you by the City of Santa Fe Municipal Charter to establish standards of ethical conduct for public officials, employees, and provide consequences if, um, those, uh, ethical obligations are violated. "We adopt standards to make decisions without consideration of personal benefit." "The idea is to provide clear guidance for everyone about what is allowed and what is not allowed; um, to advance openness in city government through disclosure; um, and to exercise legislative power as granted under the state constitution; and adopt a Code of Ethics to meet local concerns and the needs of Santa Fe specifically." Um, so, a lot of things could potentially be a conflict of interest under the code, and I won't, um, I, I won't read this, um, line by line, 'cause it's a pretty long section, but, um, I would encourage the commissioners to, um, to take some time to read it in the code or in the presentation that's posted online. Um, but generally, the idea, um, is that you want to avoid any, um, a specific and identifiable prospect of pecuniary gain or loss, other than a gain or loss that is de minimis in amount or shared with a substantial, substantial segment of the public, um, to any of the individuals or entities here listed from an official act of any public official or employee. So, generally, the idea is that, um, people, um, who are, um, operating, um, in city government, either as an employee or governing body member or commissioner, um, are making decisions, um, free from any kind of financial or personal incentive. And so that usually junk, that usually applies to, um, so financial would generally be like something that affects you or your business. Um, uh, personal would be like a member, like a close member of your family, so, um, you know, generally spouses, siblings, um, things like that. Um, things that would, um, affect a change, that affects, um, decisions that would affect a change that impacts everyone in the city, um, generally aren't subject to those kind of considerations about, um, uh, conflict of interest. Um, so an example would be like if there was a change, um, in water rates in the city that would affect everyone. Yes, that would affect you if you lived in the City of Santa Fe, but, you know, you wouldn't be, um, you wouldn't have to remove yourself from a decision on that just because you live in Santa Fe, and it would affect your personal water rates. Um, not every official act that benefits the actor is necessarily a conflict of interest. So, for example, uh, not a conflict, a gain or loss that is de minimis in amount, or a gain shared with a substantial segment of the public, not a conflict. Um, so, example, so an example, um, is, uh, if you helped draft legislation that will affect height limits for all residential buildings in Santa Fe, you are a cit- citizen of Santa Fe, so similar to the water rates example. Um, or if you receive some kind of de minimis, um, you know, so, something that's de minimis from someone that appears before you in a quasi-judicial matter. Like if, you know, you go to an event hosted by, um, you know, an organization that, um, and they have muffins out, or it's, you know, well, there's a, you know, sandwich lunch or something like that, like that would not create a conflict of interest. Um, what do you do if you have a conflict of interest? Um, so, uh, you should not participate in the proceeding. Um, what the code says, um, is, is basically that a public official or public employee shall not perform an official act or attempt to influence another person to perform an official act in any matter in which he or she has a conflict of interest. Um, and so when we say do not participate here, I, I think most of you have, have seen generally what happens is that, um, like if there's a conflict of interest that, um, you can't resolve, um, that generally, um, like here, the commissioner would, would disclose the conflict. Um, like, say, I have a conflict because, um, you know, this, uh, one of the parties is my client, or something like that. They leave the room before there's any discussion of the substance of that matter. And the idea is that they don't want, you know, um, a person's body language influencing the decision necessarily, like, you know, the way they look, like, the, the idea is they must stay out of that decision entirely, and so they usually go in the hall or sit in, um, uh, the council conference room, um, down the hall or something like that, until, until the hearing is over. Um, the New Mexico and United States constitutions impose additional standards for public officials acting in quasi-judicial capacity, prohibiting official actions tainted by conflicts of interest, bias, and prejudice, prejudgment, or other conduct that is, um, is, that is actual or creates the appearance of impropriety. Um, so, um, there's some case law on this specifically for quasi-judicial actions, and so there's kind of a heightened standard for quasi-judicial matters. Um, quasi-judicial matters are any, um, land use hearings that you would be having before you, where it, it's basically one party or like a small, you know, two parties or something like that. Like there's specific parties and a discrete group of people or land that's being impacted by a decision. Something that general, generally, um, matters that have statewide impact or are citywide impact are not going to be quasi-judicial. It kind of depends, but generally, in the City of Santa Fe, um, uh, like rezonings, development plans, things like that are, um, gonna be treated as quasi-judicial, and you're gonna be hearing those in your quasi-judicial capacity. Legislation, like a recommendation on, um, the Land Use Code update is, we, we consider that to be legislative, so not, not quasi-judicial. Um, and so, uh, there's some case law about, um, quasi-judicial, uh, hearings in particular, where there's some kind of special standards. Uh, when you're acting in your quasi-judicial, um, capacity, you do have to, um, avoid any kind of prejudgment or bias. And so that means, um, if you, um, come into some information that causes you to have a decision about pending case or the hearing, that would be prejudgment, and so that would be a situation where you'd likely wanna recuse yourself. Um, uh, another example, um, there's a, a, a Court of Appeals case, Benavides versus Burna Leo County, uh, Commissioners, where, um, a commissioner had, um, written an op-ed in favor of a project that came before them. And what the court decided was that, even though that commissioner was like, I, I, I could be, use my independent judgment, like, they were very certain that they were not biased in rendering their decision. What the court said is like, that creates the appearance of impropriety. And so like, in that situation, um, you would have to recuse in order to afford the parties all of their, their due process. So, um, that's, that's the type of situation where, um, uh, so, but quasi-judicial has the special standard, and that's the type of thing that you wanna, um, be aware of when coming to a, uh, when there's a quasi-judicial matter before you. Um, the next slide is about improper gifts. Um, so, "A gift or other financial benefit, including but not limited to travel and accommodations from any person or entity which, to the knowledge of the public official or public employee, has any prospect of direct or indirect pecuniary gain or loss from any official act to be performed by the public official or public employee with a fair market value of over $50." So, again, like, uh, like, like the example I gave earlier, a sandwich or a muffin wouldn't be an improper gift, but something bigger or more expensive could, um, potentially be an improper gift. Um, what do you do if you discover that you have accepted a gift that you later discover is improper? So, if you have, so what the code says is that if you have received a gift or other financial benefit within the last calendar year, and then discover the prospect of indirect, of direct or indirect pecuniary gain or loss from any official act to be performed by the public official or public employee, you must either, one, return the gift, or two, disclose the gift and not participate in the proceeding. So, um, an example, um, an example I, I gave when I, I had did this presentation last time was that, um, uh, with, um, I, I have two kids, and so we, and I have a lot of other people in the neighborhood that have kids. And so, a lot of times, people kind of give you stuff that's like pretty big, sometimes pretty expensive, just 'cause they wanna get it out of their house, like a big stroller or a big dollhouse or something like that. Um, you know, if, if something happened like that, you know, you might receive that, you know, a stroller, for example, and think nothing of it, but then if that person happened to have a hearing in front of you, um, six months later, like, that would be a situation where you could either return the stroller, or you could disclose the fact that you had it and not participate in the proceeding. Um, another example would be, um, like, what if, uh, sometimes there's situations where you have no option to return the gift, because it's like a meal or something, or like tickets to an event that already happened. You can't return it, you've already, um, you've already used that gift, and there's no, there's no returning it really, or rewinding. And so in that situation, basically, the only option would be to disclose and not participate in the proceeding. Um, the Inspection of Public Records Act, um, uh, basically, the purpose of the act is to give the public the greatest amount of information possible on public affairs. Um, so basically, everything that a public body creates, um, is public, uh, unless it's, um, that's related to public business, is, is, well, I guess, it's everything that's created, unless it's subject to an exception. So, um, uh, so your records related to public business as a planning commissioner are subject to IPR. Um, records can include emails and texts about public business, even if they are to or from private accounts. Um, and if there's a request for public records and you have those records, then you have to provide them. So, um, if you have, um, emails, you know, or text messages that are not, um, subject to privilege, um, you should retain those and have them available in the event that someone in the public asks, asks for them, um, as part of an IPR request. Um, there are, so, like I said, there are some exceptions to IPR, so that's something that don't have to be, uh, disclosed. Um, probably, the only exception that would probably apply to the Planning Commission is attorney-client privileged information. Um, so if you have a conversation, uh, or text message with me, or email, anything like that, any kind of communication with me, or the City Attorney's Office, it's, um, soliciting or receiving legal advice, and that inform, and privilege is not waived, then that information would be subject to the attorney-client privilege. Um, waiver generally means sharing that information, um, uh, with an outside party. Um, so, you know, if you gave that, you know, so, uh, that, uh, a waiver could happen, um, if you, uh, had an email from me and left your laptop open and the spouse saw it. Um, it could be that, you know, it could be that innocent, but it does happen sometimes. Um, and generally, um, our interpretation of the privilege waiver is that it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be waived. It should be a decision by, you know, basically the city, so, to, um, waive a privilege. Um, and if you have a question about whether, uh, if you feel like you need to waive privilege, or, um, you, you have a question about whether a communication would constitute a waiver of privilege, um, I would encourage you to reach out to me, um, or someone else from the Attorney, uh, City Attorney's Office to, you know, to ask about that before you take that action. Um, let's see, and I think that is the last slide on ethics, so, um, I'll take, take questions. And we're doing Open Meetings Act next, so if there's questions on Open Meetings Act, we can add that later. But if, if there's any questions about those slides or ethics, I'm happy to answer them now.
Any questions?
Okay.
I, I did have, I suppose, um, just on the, um, quasi-judicial. My understanding is that's a, the instruction we've received often previously is, "Don't discuss anything that's specific to..." And am I right that essentially what's written there is a more holistic description of why that's the general instruction, you do not discuss anything that's specific?
Yeah, um, I mean, I, I, I think that, like, the general idea is that you don't wanna get ex parte information, especially for members of the public, who are allowed to talk to city staff. Um, but, uh, from members of the public, or just, you know, doing a site visit or something like that on your own, or, I don't know, just trying to, doing your own re- internet research even can cause prejudgment. So, I mean, that's kind of the, the basic idea.
So, the, the site visitation came up pre- previously, at least when I was first on for one case specifically where it was. Some members didn't realize that that truly, that had to be a separate meeting where it stood, you know, uh, when we went, all reported. Um, I guess, just to distinguish, we, we can discuss it with staff.
Yes.
Any discussion with staff, uh, doesn't violate that. Discussion of a matter that relates to matters that might relate to the, uh, commission generally, but are not specific, don't invoke that.
Yeah, and so, um, the idea would be, um, we probably wanna be careful about getting, uh, information that might be, that the other commissioners may not have access to in that instance, um, just because the idea is you want to, everybody should have the same, exact same information, be making a decision based on that. But, um, can you, uh, there, it, it specifically says in the code that, um, communications with staff are not ex parte, so you can communicate with staff.
Thanks.
I would, I would encourage commission members to maybe wait until the end of the appeal period so that when a decision becomes final, that would probably be the best thing to do. If you did have a discussion with members of the public, like right after the vote, and then an appeal came up, you may be in a situation where you might have to recuse from that appeal decision. But so that would be my, that would be my suggestion. But once a case, once a matter is closed, then it's done. So you're not a decision maker anymore.
I guess two follow up questions to yours. So an example of, obviously, well, I have a question about site visits, which we discussed a little bit. I don't know if that makes more sense to ask during the open meetings. Who's your thought on that?
This may be good.
This may be good, okay. I think I'm curious about what the procedure is for, I understand we can't go on our own sites, but we can go as a commission with staff, if I'm not mistaken. However, we get the cases on a Friday. And that doesn't leave a whole lot of time for a field trip. And also is there a public notice needed? Like, how does that all, how do we do all that if we're, we don't know what's coming to plan something like that?
Yeah, they do need to, we do need to give public notice, like including the yellow signs and the letters and everything. Yeah. So we do the full public notice. And I guess I might want to defer to Dan about kind of logistics for like, if, you know, if you do have time, like if you want to try to set up a site visit, I mean, I think that if you get the materials on Friday, basically all you can do, you know, the following week is, say during the hearing, I think a site visit would be appropriate and make that, make that motion so that the hearing can be, decision can be postponed and a site visit can be arranged. But Mr. Escobell might have some insight on, you know, kind of the logistics of, you know, potentially getting that started earlier if there's.
So a site visit takes a little bit of effort, got to poll the commission to find out how many people are going to go. We have to notice, we have to put a, we have to build an agenda that does have to be published, not in the New Mexican, but it does have to be published. And it has to be published within that 72 timeframe to meet our requirements. And that means that we would have to publish that agenda or the targeted date that the commission would like to go see those, those cases. And then time is going to be an issue because not everybody has the freedom to go early in the day. So they might want to pick a different day and I have to make sure that I have the agenda posted correctly for that particular day. I was going to discuss field trips with the commission because I've had some conversations with other commissioners who would like to start going. So if I can start setting a specific date that everybody can agree on, that will make it a lot easier for everybody because they know that's when they can go.
One, one context for visitation would be actually looking at the historic board structure, right? Because they, they visit sites on every case. Now, some of that with the historic boards work and it's, they really kind of need, right? Because they're really looking at this aesthetics and context of the case.
I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
Sorry, I'll speak closer into the microphone. So I guess to me, looking at the historic board structure, it would be important that we essentially, if we're going to go this route, that we incorporate it into the scheduling system where there's going to be a site visit. It essentially happens on this day at this time.
That's correct. I would like to structure it so that it's, it's a routine as opposed to a here and there. So that everybody can set their schedules for that particular date. For site visits, the only communication that you have is with staff. You're not allowed to talk about the cases. You can ask questions to the staff. You cannot talk to any of the applicants, any of the public that may be attending. As some may be controversial and there may be people that want to be there. But the communication is not allowed.
And so we were going to set something like that. Is the notice that we're going to any site something that just needs to be noticed? Or do we need to know what specific sites we're going to in that notice? And then how do we do that if we don't know the cases that are coming?
I would probably provide the agenda when we're, I mean, the agenda is published a little bit early, 15 days prior to the meeting date. So you're going to know which cases are going. If we're going to go to any of those cases, we will probably set the, it'll be for the agenda so that we just target them in an order that makes sense for travel. But we would just go through the agenda and that, again, was published 15 days prior to the meeting date. So it's long before the packet goes out.
That's enough time to notice on a visit?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Smith.
I'm trying to think, Daniel. This conversation is the right conversation to have. Would it be appropriate, as we do with commission meetings, to say that there will be site visits the Monday before a commission meeting at five o'clock in the afternoon? I'm making up the, but just to put it as a regular event on the agenda so that we know, and if we can't make it, we can't make it. We can talk to other commissioners about it, as long as there aren't five of us in the room, apparently. But is there a way to do this so that it is a regular part of our, I'm not sure that's the right solution, but do not delay things because delay is the most expensive thing the city of Santa Fe does to developers and everybody else.
The, I guess the basic question that I would have to the commissioners is, would your site visit be the date of the planning commission? So it's fresh in your mind before you deliberate on these cases? Or do you want to hear it the day before the planning commission? So that you have time to think about it as you read through your packet material and get ready for the planning commission? Both of those are options. And then once you, once we agree on that timeframe, then I will just set it as a pattern so that we always do it.
I mean, the day of the meeting seems cumbersome. I would question how that could be accomplished. But I personally don't think it would need to be the day or the day before, but but that, what would be, what I'd be most interested in is what could be done where the notice requirements were effortless, for lack of a better term, because that's, I mean, with the historic board, the visit happens the day of it. But I think the key is they don't have a separate notice for that visit. And I mean, is there any way for that to be avoided, a separate notice?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, you, the second I have a quorum, I have to notice because it would be part of that packet material. So, I mean, technically, I would probably have to keep meeting notes because it's a continuation of the the meeting that's, that's occurring, right?
I suppose what I'm saying is is just simply that the boards, much like the historic ones, incorporate both the visit and the meeting time. But then you don't have separate.
I'm not sure how historic does it. I would have to defer to either Maggie or Heather as to how they arrange those field trips.
I might, there's probably a lot of things to iron out here that don't necessarily need to be done in this format. So I apologize if we're, I think we're going too far in the weeds, but we can just kind of continue this conversation with them and maybe just make a proposal. Hopefully, next meeting, just a suggestion how this might happen.
And I can maybe offer something if it's the pleasure of the chair?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So with reference to the Historic Districts Review Board, there is a separate agenda that is published for the site visit itself. And then at the site visits, we take very simple notes. We are very clear in that we don't talk to applicants and all of that. It's just conversation between staff and the H board. And then those notes, the site visit notes are published as part of the minute, the official minutes for those proceedings.
So the, understood on both of those points, but the signage incorporates both the meeting and the site visitation, correct?
Mr. Chair, so the signage and notice requirements are for the public hearing or the case itself. There is no required notice other than the agenda for the site visit.
Thank you.
If anything else, we can move on to the next. Okay. Okay. So the next presentation is about the Open Meetings Act. So the Open Meetings Act is a state law that applies to the planning commission. The Open Meetings Act applies to, under state law, any administrative adjudicatory body or other policymaking body of any state or local government agency, including municipalities. So because this is a policymaking and adjudicatory body, Open Meetings Act applies by state law. We do have some advisory committees at the city of Santa Fe that the Open Meetings Act does not apply to by law, but it does apply to by resolution. So we do follow Open Meetings Act for those committees. The idea of the Open Meetings Act is that public business of a public body must be conducted in public. So the purpose is to provide rules that public bodies follow in order to ensure that public business is conducted in public. In order to accomplish this goal, the Open Meetings Act requires the following. Public business has to be conducted in full public view. Actions of public bodies must be taken openly and deliberations of public bodies have to be open to the public. So the New Mexico Court of Appeals has said that the purpose of the Open Meetings Act is to open the conduct of business of government to the scrutiny of the public and to ban decision making in secret. Procedural defects in compliance with Open Meetings Act can be cured by taking prompt corrective action. So, you know, if there's, if there is some kind of a problem with public access, like you can fix that. Like if the, if the front door is locked, you can unlock it, things like that. It doesn't, you know, just because there was one error, it doesn't mean that, you know, you have to throw the hearing out and start over necessarily. So the idea is to try to correct it if you can do it timely. The Open Meetings Act requires that a quorum of commission members meet in public unless the subject matter of the meeting is exempt from this requirement. So in the case of the planning commission, the city's code provides that a quorum means a majority of members. And so we've interpreted that to mean that if there are vacancies on the commission, that it's a majority of the actual existing members, not the, not the potential seats. So if there's only seven commission members, then four would be a quorum. So, but I think now we're fully got everybody, right? So we have nine, so only five is a quorum. So there's such a thing as a rolling or walking quorum. And this is important because discussions among commission members are subject to the Open Meetings Act requirements, regardless of whether the discussion occurs over the course of time or in different places. So I have a couple of examples. So here's the first example. So commissioners A, B, and C meet for lunch and end up discussing whether the color of a pending housing project is consistent with the city code. Later, Commissioner A emails another commissioner, Commissioner D, to ask her opinion about the color of the housing project. Commissioner D then mentions the discussion to Commissioner E when she sees Commissioner E at the grocery store. That creates a rolling quorum and it would violate the Open Meetings Act because now five members of the commission have been involved in that decision about public business. Example two, Commissioner A emails the entire commission to ask if anyone will be absent at the next meeting. Commissioner B emails the entire group back to say that she will be absent. That email exchange would violate the Open Meetings Act. So Commissioner A simply emailing something to the entire commission wouldn't violate the Open Meetings Act, but once someone writes back to everyone, now that's a discussion. And so that's when it becomes, it becomes a violation of the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act includes the public's right to attend and listen. So it requires that all persons so desiring shall be permitted to attend and listen to the deliberations and proceedings. This means that reasonable public access is required. But the Open Meetings Act is not intended to be so strictly construed as to impair or impede the effective workings of government. And so there's a helpful case from the New Mexico Supreme Court, Gutierrez versus the City of Albuquerque, which, in which there was a very controversial decision before a public body and there was an overflow crowd. And that public body did basically everything they could to try to get people into that room, but there were just not enough people in the room and there wasn't a remote option. And so what the court decided in that situation was that, you know, basically the city had met the requirements of Open Meetings Act because they'd made reasonable, because they offered reasonable public access by like opening the public space and giving as many people access to it as possible. And so even though there were some members of the public that weren't allowed to come in, that didn't mean that the, the meeting violated the Open Meetings Act. So I'm going to talk about remote appearance, which has become really common in the last few years. The Open Meetings Act does allow remote participation under certain circumstances. So public bodies must have their own law allowing it. We do have our own ordinance. It's code section 1.9. It is not available on municode, but we do have an ordinance that allows remote participation. The, so we do have, so we meet that requirement and then it must be difficult or impossible for the member to attend in person. And for that, and that member has, in order for that member to be able to participate remotely. So we've generally interpreted that to mean if you're sick or out of town. So there may be some other circumstances where it's difficult or impossible, but generally in those two circumstances, we've considered it difficult or impossible. And then all members must be identifiable, able to hear each other and audible to the public. So you do have to be able to like use your microphone. You have to be able to hear what's going on in the hearing if you're participating remotely. And you have to be able to hear everything. So the other speakers, members of the public. So that's why, that's why the microphones are so important. The public is entitled to reasonable notice of public meetings. So the commission must give notice of all public meetings of a quorum of the commission. So basically, the state law doesn't give us a ton of guidance on that. But the city adopts an open meetings resolution establishing reasonable notice annually for all public bodies at the city. And additionally, the city code, city resolutions, and in some circumstances, the state statute established rules for notice for different types of matters, including the manner of issuing notice and certain deadlines. So like Dan was talking about earlier, hearings have to have, have to generally have to follow very certain notice requirements. Fields have their own notice requirements. The bare minimum, which takes me to the next slide, is 72 hours. So unless there is an emergency, 72 hours is going to be the minimum notice of a meeting under the Open Meetings Act. So giving 72 hours notice of like a rezoning hearing would be okay under the Open Meetings Act, but it wouldn't meet our code requirement. So it wouldn't be a reasonable, it probably wouldn't be considered reasonable public notice. And the 72 hour requirement applies regardless of whether the time period includes a Saturday, Sunday, or holiday. So for example, if a commission holds a meeting on a Monday at nine, the 72 hour requirement would be met if the agenda was available on the Friday before at 9:00 AM. And with respect to emergencies, it seems like that would be unlikely to come up with the planning commission. For the governing body, emergencies in the past have included matters related to COVID and the soldier's monument. Or it could possibly come up to extend an emergency order. I don't think that I've ever heard of an emergency hearing for the planning commission, but in theory, should have one. in theory, should have one. So and then there's another, there's an option for reconvened meetings as well. And so these are, these are different than special meetings. So public meetings can be recessed and reconvened within under seventy-two hours. So if, for example, if we had a hearing go really late into the night, and you wanted to reconvene within seventy-two hours, you could without having to renotice. You would just have, you would be limited to basically the, what was on the original agenda. So the information that's on the original agenda, you couldn't add an additional case or an additional matter. So to reconvene, you have to state the date, time, and place for continuation of the meeting before you adjourn. Post notice of the continuation on or near the door of the place where the meeting originated and in at least one other location. And the commission may not discuss items at the reconvene meeting that were not on the agenda for the original. And then minutes are a requirement. Keeping minutes are required under the Open Meetings Act. The commission is required to keep written minutes of all meetings. Minutes of the open meetings have to include this information at a bare minimum. So it's date, time, and place of the meeting, names of all members of the commission in attendance, statement of what proposals were considered, and a record of any decisions made by the commission and of how each member voted. So and those are the minimum requirements for Open Meetings Act. But in many circumstances, it's better to have a more thorough record, especially for quasi judicial matters, which might have appeals or might go to governing body for a final decision. And we do that often through having a transcript. There's also a video recording. The minutes have to contain a description of the subject of all discussions had by the commission, even if no action is taken. A draft copy of the minutes must be prepared within ten working days of the meetings. Draft copies of the minutes have to be available for public inspection, usually at the clerk's office. And then the commission must approve, amend, or disapprove draft minutes at the end, at the next meeting of a quorum, and the minutes are not official until they are approved by the, by the body. Okay, questions about the Open Meetings Act?
I, I have one.
Go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
I have never heard, it doesn't mean it doesn't exist in other places, but I've worked in several different environments where the minutes of a meeting have to include anything other than the subject, the issue, and the decision. And my only point in raising that, I'm not afraid or unwilling to share information with the public, but minutes become impossible to read and bureaucratic. And I'm wondering, what was the, do you know the intent, or is there any flexibility with that? Because minutes are intended not to just, to recreate the meeting. In my, in my history, to, up until tonight, minutes are intended to tell the public what the issue was, what the two positions were, and what the vote was, what the decision was.
I just wanted to note for the record that Chair Clow just entered the meeting. I, I don't know what the, the idea is. I mean, that is, there's not really any wiggle room on this state law. And I think, I think that you'd mentioned, you said basically the proposals that were considered and the votes that were made. Was there anything else? You said another jurisdiction they normally covered?
Simply, I, 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 I'm sorry, I missed the fact it was a state law. It is, it is an extraordinarily bureaucratic obligation for, to require the staff to record and write the, the entire discussion essentially, and be liable for getting some of it wrong or misunderstanding it. So, and, and it, and it also makes the decision of the commission in this case less clear, simply because of all the other, the other words. And so if it is a state law, I would just advocate that you go back and try to understand, understand more clearly from the Attorney General. What's the de minimis? Not to withhold information. Because if people want to know something, they can always call the office. We, we know that. But what's the de minimis that we can do so that our minutes are not bureaucratic nightmares for the staff to produce? Couldn't we do them verbally? I mean, whatever. Can we record them? God forbid. Whatever. Just, please check it.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Capen?
Thank you for all this information. I was hoping you could go in a little bit. I know we're trying to wrap up, but you explained a lot about the quasi judicial as it relates to the Open Meetings Act. And I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the legislative part of it and how and the proper way that we can work together. How many, you know, I understand it follows the quorum rules. But essentially, if we are wanting to discuss things that we potentially want to work on in a legislative way, how do we do that and follow the act properly?
So generally, for matters that are legislative, so for example, like the land development code, you wouldn't have the same risk of prejudgment or, you know, basically personal benefit or anything like that. You know, I mean, if you're generally allowed to bring, you know, your, your knowledge and your life to that proceeding. So it doesn't just have to be, you're not just looking at the material that's in front of you. You're going to be looking at the material as a policymaker. And so that may include, you know, things that you've learned elsewhere, potentially, like not necessarily just in the hearing in front of you. So so, you know, basically, for those, in those instances, like you're welcome to, to do your own research. You might have some personal experience with something that, you know, impacts the legislation, like, you know, you might want to, you might have a house that you, you might want to add height to someday, considering legislation that affects the height of buildings. So you're allowed to have other information, and you're allowed to have, like, there's not, you're allowed to have those kind of contacts that you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to have for quasi judicial matter.
As far as meeting, if we're not creating a quorum, we can meet outside of, like, we can meet and talk and work outside of open meeting, correct?
Yes. So as long as it's not, if it's public business at all, that needs to be an open meeting if it's a quorum. But if it is not a quorum, so if it's, so right now, if it's four or fewer members, then you are welcome to talk about public business. Yeah, it does not need to be noticed or in public.
Okay. Thank you very much.
As long as it's not a rolling quorum.
Exactly. Yeah.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, go ahead.
Attorney, you just went from legislative to public business. It's all public business. Now, can we, when we're discussing bluntly, the code, the plan, et cetera, amongst ourselves, should we choose to? Are we? Are we under the Open Meetings Law? I read the, whatever, chapter fourteen, whatever it is. I did not think so. Am I wrong? I've, I've been wrong before.
So you are under the Open Meetings Act. We don't have the same kinds of ethical issues. So you could, so basically, like, you could have like a conversation with a member of the public about it, and you wouldn't have to recuse if, you know, the legislation affected you. But if you were to talk to planning commissioners about that, you know, about legislation, that would need to be done in public if it were a quorum.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. And that's, that's definitive.
Yes.
End of story.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you for your attention this evening, everyone.
Yes, Ms. Ruskel.
Before we leave Staff Communications, I just want to let you know there's a trial run for the next Planning Commission hearing. I was thinking of doing the site visit on Wednesday so that we can have the study session before the meeting on Thursday. And try to have a trial run there, and then we can modify it as we go until we get to a place where everybody likes, likes it. Does that sound, that sounds reasonable? Then that's what I'm going to do for the, because we do have a couple postponed cases. We get to the content of Phase Three. And then you also have Vista de la Solaris. There might be some other cases that might show up on the agenda. So it'll be a good, a good day to try it. And we just need to make sure that if you drive there by yourself, you do not communicate with the applicant. And I would prefer that we all drive together in the van so that we're isolated. I know that's kind of horrible, but I promised to take a shower that day. But it, it just makes for a controlled environment and, you know, we'll meet at City Hall and we'll go from there. And if you choose to drive, you can just follow along.
What date are you talking about specifically? The fifth?
Yes, sir.
Well, do it, do it if everyone else can. Okay.
Okay, now we move on to new business, and the first matter is the consideration of Bill Number 2024-17, adoption of Ordinance Number 2025.
Yes, good evening, Chair Clow. Can you hear me? This is Maggie Moore. Beaming in remotely. And I will get my presentation up. I'm sorry that I couldn't be there in person tonight. Came down with something earlier this week and just needed to come in remotely. Okay, is that a presentation coming up for you? Hello?
Yes, up and running, Maggie.
Oh, okay, good. I didn't hear anything. Okay, great. And y'all can hear me clear and without interruption?
Unfortunately.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
That's me. You know me.
Yeah. Well, good evening.
Sorry, if I could interrupt just a second. Sorry, Maggie, this is Rebecca Minnack-Herman. I think there was a question about whether we needed to read the entire caption into the record. It's, it's pretty long. And so I'm just, I'm just checking the committee rules. If I could just have a minute, it might actually save us some time.
Okay.
So it looks like that's only required for introduction, and this is only, it's already been introduced. I don't think you need to read the whole caption. You have a, if you have a short version.
That's great. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca, for looking into that. Well, we will, we'll save ourselves that time this evening. But I just am excited to, to bring this forward for your consideration tonight. This has been a monumental effort with contributions from across our city government and within our diverse community. I do want to acknowledge the past and present leadership and staff of the Land Use Department who've worked on this, you know, for the last few years, and our partners across city government and public utilities and public works, in the fire department, and in the city attorney's office, and the members of our advisory working groups who volunteered their time and provided their expertise in support of this legislation. So thank you. And this, this update of the code has, is the culmination of over two years of public engagement, community input, citywide staff review, and direction from city leadership. Our efforts began back in the spring of 2023 with a virtual open house that had to be made virtual because of a freak snowstorm that shut the city down. But we persisted and hosted again an in-person open house a few weeks later at the Santa Fe Community Convention Center to, to kick off our efforts. Following these events, the team solicited input through public surveys. We launched our project website, conducted stakeholder interviews, and collected additional contributions from city staff and leadership. The, all the information that we gathered was documented in the LDC Assessment Report, which was released in the summer of 2023. Following the release of the report, we hosted another round of engagement events, one at City Hall and one at the South Side Library to discuss the findings of the assessment report and collect additional feedback. We, at that time, assembled our advisory working groups and conducted, you know, several meetings of those groups to inform and guide our progress. Following that, we hosted a study session with the Planning Commission and a community drop-in events at City Hall, and we posted the draft online for community input. And it was funny, I was looking back at the calendar of events, and we were actually together this same date last year, discussing the LDC Code update on October 16, 2024. And our current adoption timeline began on October 8 with the introduction at governing body, where the entire case caption was read into the record. On the next day, on October 9, we heard the first public comment in front of the governing body. And then on Tuesday night, we had a joint hearing of the Historic Districts Review Board and the Archaeological Review Committee to review their portions of the code. And then obviously, we're here tonight. Following this hearing, we will go before the subcommittees of the governing body, starting next week on Monday at Public Works, then Quality of Life, and then Finance the following Monday. This effort will culminate in a special meeting of the governing body on November 19, which will be the adoption hearing and another opportunity for public comment and, and questions from the governing body.
Okay.
So the last comprehensive update of the code was in 1987. And over nearly forty years since, there have been numerous amendments, additions, and revisions to the code. This piecemeal adoption of effort This piecemeal adoption of efforts resulted in a layered, complex and sometimes contradictory set of rules and regulations, which became notoriously difficult to understand, interpret and enforce. To solve this in 2023, the Planning and Land Use Department, under the direction of the governing body, initiated a contract with Clarion and Associates for a comprehensive, three-phased update of the land development code. The goals of phase one were to improve organization, clarity and general user friendliness of the code. In addition to the repeal and replace bill and new code that you have in your packet, I've also included a summary memo and a disposition report to support your review and analysis of this major piece of legislation. The disposition report is a three-column crosswalk with the existing code in the far left column and the new code citation in the middle and a brief description of the changes we've made in phase one in the right column. We have chosen to highlight certain changes as substantive. And those changes have been highlighted in yellow in the disposition report and are discussed further in the memo where we have a little bit more space to provide the context and background behind these proposals. We will also discuss some of those changes in the presentation tonight. I've also included our LDC assessment report, which we talked about a few slides ago, which summarizes our public engagement efforts, our goals and priorities for the phase one update. And finally, in your packet, you will find the Enhanced Affordability Incentives Report, which discusses how Santa Fe and other communities have used streamlined development reviews, density bonuses, dimensional flexibility and fee waivers to incentivize affordable housing. So through our engagement efforts with the public and discussions with city staff and at the urging of many of our advisory working group members, we also included several updates in phase one that go beyond the goals of clarity, user friendliness and better organization. We've included targeted incentives to enhance affordable housing and promote a more diverse mix of missing middle housing types and expanded options to reduce or eliminate parking requirements intended to spur economic development and create a more walkable city. There's really something in here for everyone. Whether you are passionate about parks, trails and open space, about conserving our native tree canopy, reducing light pollution, promoting walkable infill development, protecting archaeological resources, supporting green building or free speech, the LDC has it. Now, a great example of how the new code is better organized, clearer and more user friendly are the changes we made to the zoning districts. In the old code, district information was text-heavy and scattered throughout several sections of the code with often, you know, hidden rules and regulations that were difficult to find. In the new code, we have consolidated information on each zoning district into one place. Instead of text-only, we have tables and illustrations. Uh, the information has been simplified and reduced and presented in a more user-friendly, um, kind of one-stop shopping location. Some of the other changes are that we have also removed a provision that required developments in high-density residential zoning districts to request special permission from the planning commission for any density over 10 units per acre. Uh, this will give immediate relief to small infill projects primarily in the downtown area where these zoning districts, um, are present. And we've also added a Parks and Open Space zoning district, um, which will be a placeholder for further development in phase two. We've also touched, um, up the overlay zoning districts within the code. We added basic maps of location and boundaries of that, that were in our GIS maps into the code just to give people a sense of where these overlays, uh, exist within the city. Um, we did not, we chose to not carry forward the residential suite hotel motel overlay and the ecological res, resource overlay. We found that neither of those overlays had been applied to the city map to anywhere on the ground within the city. And so we thought, you know, their removal was warranted. Um, we reorganized and edited the language in the escarpment overlay, which is kind of notoriously kind of difficult to administer and enforce. We also eliminated restrictions on the sale of alcohol and advertising, uh, in the air, that were in the airport road overlay. Um, they were preventing certain uses considered desirable. And they also, um, were, became redundant with certain, um, citywide efforts and, and other state efforts around alcohol sales. Within the historic district overlay, we added clarification, new descriptions of architectural character and removed the public view limitation on application of standards. We proposed several changes to the summary table of allowed uses, which used to be called the permitted table of uses. We have renamed the special use permit as a conditional use permit to kind of be more in line with the intent of that request. Um, some new uses have been added. Uh, you'll see, you know, a lot of, um, breweries and doggy daycares and urban farms and things that, um, you know, these types of uses that were not, have become quite common in the city, but weren't, um, as common, you know, even five, 10 years ago. We've added, um, removed the accessory and temporary uses into the table. Um, we have added several different housing types to the permitted table of uses there, or the table of allowed uses, rather, sorry. Um, these types of housing, um, types like duplex and triplex and quadplex were technically, um, allowed, but they were not, um, highlighted within the table of allowed uses. And we wanted to make sure that those were explicitly listed as, uh, and where they would be permitted. We've also added, um, for easier navigation, to use specific standards where they exist in the far right column of the table of allowed uses, you'll find the, the cross-reference to where you can find you specific standards. Okay, and, um, at this point, I will hand it off to Matt Goble, who, from, um, Goble Partners, who is joining us tonight. Matt, are you?
I am here.
Wonderful.
There's my camera. Uh, Commissioner, it's good to see you again. Thank you for the opportunity to be here to support, um, the planning staff and Maggie and Heather and the city. Um, I'm going to continue on talking about some of the key changes to the development and design standards parts of the code. Um, I think throughout all of this part of the code, which is, is very significant, we did a thorough review of the language to try to eliminate planneries and legalese and to do a reorganization to make the information more logical and accessible, just easier to find. You had a lot of development design standards scattered throughout the document and we did a lot of consolidation. Um, in terms of each individual substantive section, I'll just highlight a few things that we did. Um, nothing major, uh, but we, for example, in landscaping, we updated the perimeter parking lot standards uh, to clarify and standardize when a parking lot needs to have perimeter landscape buffers. Um, clarified the threshold for applicability for when that kicks in. Uh, in the walls and fences section, uh, we, we added, uh, some additional information on permitted fence materials, which was really codifying existing city policy, including an explicit prohibition on barbed wire. Next slide. Um, parking, uh, we added some new material in the parking section to, again, consolidate information. You had a, a disconnect between the parking regulations in the main body of the code and a lot of the actual parking ratios in the appendix. That's now all been consolidated. Now, for this phase one effort, we did not do any changes to the underlying minimum parking ratios. We didn't reduce them. We didn't, uh, exempt them. Instead, we focused on providing more, uh, flexibility in how an applicant could potentially reduce the minimum number of parking spaces provided. You can see the whole list of potential options on this slide, shared parking, off-site parking, et cetera, of where someone could, could, you know, make a case that they don't need to meet the minimum number of parking spaces. Um, we, uh, we think that this is a, an area that's ripe for, you know, review in phase two of the project. A lot of people said, let's go in and reduce the, the minimum requirements altogether, or maybe just exempt certain areas of the city. We'll definitely have those conversations, but those are clearly substantive and, and need to be, uh, take, undertaken in the next phase. Uh, we also added ADA and EV requirements, uh, parking spaces required for electric vehicles. This was one of the low-hanging fruit, um, topics that was raised in the assessment report that a lot of stakeholders wanted us to go ahead and, and propose. And so on the table on the slide, you can see an example of the, uh, minimum number of EV spaces that are required for different land uses. Um, and they're distinguished between EV capable spaces and EV installed and, and we introduced some new definitions for those as well. So again, that's a, that's a starting point and that could be relooked at and, and expanded upon in phase two. But that was an important addition here that the community wanted to see. Next slide. Um, bicycle parking, uh, we did a significant update here. Um, we, we disconnected those from the required auto spaces. And so now you've got a number of short-term or long-term bicycle spaces required for different land uses. And that's not, that's not tied to the number of automobile, automobile spaces like it was in the prior code. But it's, it's a, it's a more freestanding, uh, requirement and it's based on national standards as you see on the slide. Next point, next slide. Um, in the sign ordinance, the main thing that we accomplished in phase one was a removal of the content-based regulation. There are, uh, there, there's new clear Supreme Court, uh, guidance that local governments need to have extraordinarily, uh, high, they, they must meet a very high bar to have any content-based regulation. Generally, you can't regulate a sign based on what it says. You can only focus on the time and the place and the manner in your local regulations. And so we helped scrub the regulations to remove some of that, all that content-based information and make it, uh, content neutral. Uh, the impact fee section has been reorganized to make the content more accessible. It was, it was pretty dense in the prior code. Fees, fees have not been changed in this draft. Uh, we did not touch the street design standards. Uh, they have been, uh, looked at and are being reviewed as part of a concurrent effort uh, to update those and so no changes now. Uh, also no changes to architectural design review. Um, outside the historic districts, you have a fairly complex point system, uh, to look at our architectural design. People definitely want us to look at that and simplify it or maybe replace it with a different system. But that's a, that's a phase two issue. And so nothing was touched there in phase one. Uh, finally, administration of procedures, finally for me. No substantive changes here. We focused on making it more accessible. So we've got, for example, a table on the left graphic of all the different, uh, review procedures in the code from rezonings to certificates of occupancy. Uh, there's a clear reference to its substantive standards. There's a clear indication of, of who does what, who the, who the recommending bodies are and the decision-making bodies. Um, all the procedures have been rewritten, uh, just to, uh, standardize their organization and their formatting. So you're going to see a consistent flow chart, like you see on the right there, for all of the procedures that helps you identify at a glance which pieces of a common structure, common procedural structure apply. So that's a great foundation for phase two. Now we can go in and start making some of the more, uh, uh, significant, uh, potential changes about, uh, maybe delegating more decisions to staff, maybe thinking about, uh, new types of procedures or, or streamlining procedures more significantly. But for right now, it's just, it's just, uh, housekeeping type stuff. Next slide, I think goes back.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, Matt. Okay. Yeah, and I just, I want to, to end our presentation, um, on housing and say that by far, you know, the most common refrain that we hear when we're out in the community is about the need for more affordable housing. And we know that our current regulations are not meeting the need. Um, our findings from the Santa Fe Forward Assessment Report, um, kind of highlighted on the right there indicate that we still have a lot of work to do. We, um, 67% of our housing is still a single-family unit, so we're not providing diverse housing options. Uh, 49% of renters are cost-burdened, uh, 39% of homeowners. And this doesn't account for the many people who, you know, work, um, in Santa Fe but live, you know, south in Bernalillo or, or up north in Pecos and who commute into the city, uh, for work, uh, many whom are, are city staff. So what, um, I just wanted to, before I get into the, what we're proposing with the Enhanced, um, Affordability Incentives, want to just recap what the current Santa Fe Homes program, uh, does. So what this current Santa Fe Homes program does is require 20% of dwelling units for, in for-sale projects to be affordable and 15% of dwelling units in rental projects to be affordable. For compliance with the program, um, developments receive a 15% density bonus. Um, and rental projects are eligible to pay a fee in lieu, which goes into the, um, Affordable Housing Trust Fund and is helped, you know, for, um, you know, various rental assistance programs and, you know, potentially construction of, of affordable homes in the city. Uh, but there is currently no incentive to build additional affordable units beyond these basic requirements. And so how that kind of flushes out with this example, this scenario on the screen is if you had, you know, a development of 20 homes, um, for, for sale, you would have, you know, 16 market-priced, uh, four would be required to be affordable, uh, the 20%. And then the 15% would afford for three density bonus homes and those, you know, would be offered at market, our market rates. So with phase one, we are proposing the Enhanced Affordability Incentive Program, which, uh, for those projects that want to provide affordability above the current requirements, the 20% of the 15%, and with density bonuses that scale relative to the percentage of affordable units. So in this enhanced incentive program with a development of, of providing 30% affordability with a similar kind of 20 base units, you would have 14 market-priced homes offered. Uh, 30% uh, would be six affordable-priced homes. And then with the scaled density bonus, there would be nine additional, you know, dwelling units allowed, um, for a total of 29 homes. And also with this incentive program, we have accommodated for small infill projects. So on these smaller lots, um, for properties of one acre or smaller, you can, um, maximize your, um, density by, you know, you'd get two, uh, market rate and one affordable home, uh, house. So for, so four homes there. And this type of gentle density approach kind of, we believe will enable traditional housing compounds that have been key to Santa Fe's historic design and, you know, allow, you know, those, um, property owners and developers to, to bring in the kind of missing middle housing that Santa Fe is, is lacking while ensuring that some of those homes are offered to the community at affordable prices. In addition to the density bonuses, we are offering administrative review for these, uh, enhanced affordability projects and flexibility with parking requirements and dimensional standards to help facilitate the, this type of development. And so with that, um, concludes my presentation, our presentation, and we will happily answer any questions from the planning commission.
And Maggie, if I may, I would just like to report out on the Historic Districts Review Board. As you saw on the chart, um, sorry, my camera is acting weird. There we go. As you saw on the chart, and I'm sorry I'm not there, I'm, um, under the weather and did not want to share the joy. So, um, the chart illustrated the, the process for review and comment on the proposed, um, chapter 14. The Historic Districts Review Board, Review Board, Tuesday night, I presented to them and they expressed grave concern about the proposed design standards in the historic districts themselves. So their action at that, um, meeting was to retain the So their action at that meeting was to retain the existing historic district standards. In the packet that you reviewed, the standards had been changed somewhat to acknowledge the different styles of architecture in the historic districts and be more based on materials rather than style. The origin of the Historic Districts ordinance is, is basically a styles based ordinance. And it really needed to evolve to a preservation and, and design ordinance. And in places it has not. So. But the H Board felt that it would be important at this point to delay that to phase two. While they, while they commented that there are some good elements of those district standards, their recommendation was to retain all of the proposed changes and recommend approval for those to the governing body and the planning commission. And then request that, that the existing district standards for all the historic districts, including the downtown and east side, Don Gaspard Historic Revere District, Historic Transition District and the West Side Guadalupe District, all of those be retained as they are currently. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you so much.
And as a clarification, we're not controlled by the historic planning or the historic commission? Are we limited or can we disagree with them?
I defer to that, Ms. Manu Carmen.
I'll just say, most of us, most of us are cut off from video. Can we be reconnected?
Sorry to interrupt. I was just going to say that it, it's not, you're not making a final decision on H Board or anything. If you're to make your own decision.
We can make your recommendation on the whole code. Great. Thank you. First, I want to thank the department for providing materials that were really organized and made it. It makes a review of this new ordinance, which is humongous, very easy. Maggie, your report was really good. The disposition report is really good and Homewise's report was excellent. It's great that they put in what other cities are doing. It gives a good balance to, to the innovation. So with that though, any other commissioners have comments? Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I would like to have the incredibly terrific deck that Maggie just showed us, you sent it to me or all of us. I just, I'd like to look, look it through. It's, there's lots in there.
Yes, I can, I can absolutely do that.
Thanks, Amy. You know, I, I am in Vermont, so.
Any other comments from Commissioner Capen?
Commissioner Smith, you better bring us some maple candies when you come back, just saying. Yeah, I just really briefly, I just wanted to thank and congratulate the whole team that worked on this. Reading it was incredibly inspiring and it was really clear how much work has gone into this. And I think while I like the, what the, the beginnings of the proposed incentives for the density bonuses and stuff. And I think it's a great start and a great platform to, to try some things out and see what we can start moving in Santa Fe. And so just thank you for all your hard work on this. It's great.
Any other comments? Yes.
So for clarification on the signs. Matt, you were saying that the Supreme Court passed a law that we cannot dictate signs, but the Historic Review Board is now trying to put that enactment within this? Is that what I'm hearing correctly? I mean, I just, I need a little clarification on that. Sorry.
No, yeah, not exactly. What, what the Supreme Court did, they didn't pass a law. They, they, they ruled on cases where local governments had tried to regulate the substance of signs. And they said, you can't do that. They said, you can't, you can't regulate content. You can only regulate the time, you know, how, how long a sign is up or the place where a sign is located or the manner of a sign. So maybe how frequently an electronic sign flashes. So time, place, manner, that's what you can do. They said you can't look at content. We went in and we, we took out the content based parts of the code. I, I think you might've had a, a regulation that dealt with real estate signs. And you can't do that unless it's, you have to read the sign to know it's a real estate science. You can't do that. So instead we have like, you know, regulations on signs in the front yard. The historic piece is, is a special type of sign control where they're, they're regulating the time, place and manner of a historic sign that's just been around for a long time. They're not getting at the content either. I, I think they're, and, and as part of their work, I think they were just trying to reinstate the pieces of the sign regulations that are in place already. Heather, please correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think they, I don't, they're, they're not trying to regulate based on content.
That is correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
Peter, you want to mute yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm in a hotel. Oh God, how do I do this? Yes, I will.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Mc, Commissioner McReynolds.
Just on the, so the historic board wants to basically put on hold all the changes that were proposed, right? Is that, is that correct? Just to clarify.
Chair Clow, member McReynolds, that's not correct. Actually, most of the changes, they decided to retain with the exception of the design standards in all of the historic districts. But there were many other changes and clarifications in the bulk of the ordinance relative to primary facades, relative to historic preservation standards and the like.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move to public comment. If anyone here in chambers would like to come forward and comment on this proposed legislation, please come forward. And please state your name and your address and you'll be sworn in. Is this on? There we go. Kathy Collins, Executive Director for Santa Fe Habitat for Humanity, 405 Sunset Street. Kathy with a C. First of all, I just, I, I was not here when all of this work happened. I'm barely new to Santa Fe and to Santa Fe Habitat for Humanity. But I'm grateful for the level of effort that has gone in, particularly having Citizens Working Group, a technical working group, all the involvement of staff and the various governing bodies that have been involved in this. And then obviously the city review from the legal department. I find that anytime efforts are made to update and align, get, get rid of confusing things, add things that help people understand with tables and consistency and having things that like things with like things just makes all that process easier. And as you can imagine, this is a very important part of what Santa Fe Habitat does and guides a lot of everything that we, we do. So I'm, I'm glad to see that I get to come in at this point and hopefully we'll get to be involved in the second phase of this process. I will say that Santa Fe Habitat does favor increasing the building height that, that will support the ability to adhere to the green building code. That's something very important to Santa Fe Habitat. We build net zero homes. And so that ensures that we're allowed to keep doing that. We also believe that the flexibility of parking requirements is something that is likely to help us at different points in, in doing our, our work. And while we don't directly benefit in the same way that a for profit developer would from the incentive, density incentives, it will allow us to build more affordable homes. We're a hundred percent, we build a hundred percent affordable homes. So we will always then be able to build more homes. Being able to have a little more gentle density and really spelling out that the duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes are allowable definitely will help us. Having administrative review will definitely help us. Our fees tend to already be waived, but we understand how moving all of these incentives work together. And we are in favor of anything that helps improve the portfolio of the number of affordable homes because we can't do it all, nor can any other single developer. We have to be doing this together. So the bottom line is that all of this allows us and this city to have more affordable housing. I appreciate your consideration.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Julie Bennett. I live at five Rancho Valle in Espanola in Santa Fe County. I have lived in Santa Fe County for forty five or fifty years. I'm here to ask you to please support the incentives in the CAN update as a package without amendments. As written, CAN addresses the structural administrative and implementation strategies to provide the sorely needed momentum for affordable housing in Santa Fe. Lack of affordable housing is affecting everything from the ability to retain teachers, service workers, law enforcement, fire, city employees, and young families importantly cannot locate here. There's no starter homes available for young families. It may actually, this ordinance may actually have an effect on homelessness because homelessness is a housing issue. The liveliness and diversity of Santa Fe, which I consider my city. My children went to school here. I work here and have worked here for many years. It's at risk. And as to my personal bias in favor of this ordinance, my two adult children would like to move back to Santa Fe where they grew up. But the cost of housing is a disincentive. So please accept this ordinance as a package and let's move on from here. Time is money in the development industry. And streamlining things, making them more accessible and transparent is really important. I think this ordinance does that.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Veronica Toledo and I live at One Horse Peak. I live locally and I work in affordable housing at Homewise. I urge you to recommend the urgent passage of the phase one update to the land development code. I'm grateful for the land use department's robust community input process on this update through the citizens advisory working group, technical advisory working group, public meetings and online opportunities for input. As you know very well, we are already a year behind on the original adoption timeline for this phase and we must act urgently to support those most in need of housing. In particular, the enhanced affordability incentives are a critical component of this update that can set the foundation for more substantive changes that promote housing in phase two. These must be passed as a package as all of the components are interrelated and create a foundation that we believe will motivate desperately needed construction of more new units. As you know and heard in from the presentation, there's already precedent for this here in the link overlay and in many other cities. I'm also thrilled to see the parking updates as part of phase one, which will enable more housing and reduce costs and the very small building height change to support modern building practices and green building. Thank you so much, planning commissioners, for pushing for this update to move forward without delay.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Gredinsky and I live at twenty nine eleven Yehé Pablo Real. Very Santa Fe. I am here to voice my strong support of the package of incentives proposed in this update that will increase affordable housing in Santa Fe. I have heard a lot from the mayoral candidates speaking about the importance of increasing our, our affordable housing. And here is an opportunity to make important changes in the land code update that will lead to those positive outcomes. Every day I hear my friends lament that their children who have grown up in Santa Fe can't afford to live here and are moving away. Every day I hear my teacher friends struggling to stay in education because we don't have enough teachers and the city can't entice more teachers to move here because of the high cost of rent or homeownership. What are we waiting for? If we are serious about addressing our housing crisis, then I urge you to pass this phase one update to the code and especially to ensure the affordability incentives move forward without amendments. We can't delay anymore. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Chair and Mrs., Madam Chair, sorry. Thank you, Chair and members of the, of the commission. My name is Ann Watkins. I live at twenty one thirty eight Candelero, Candelero in Santa Fe. I will just start by saying what they said. I'm not going to repeat all those things because you've already heard it. I want to add two additional things. Now, I just want to say again how important it is that these amendments are included now and that we move forward. First thing I want to say is that when we decided to settle in Santa Fe, I've lived in New Mexico for more than fifty years. We decided ten or twelve years ago to, to move to Santa Fe. It was really hard not to find, to, to find a house that wasn't just a sort of traditional sprawl suburban development home. These, these changes will allow for different housing types and opportunities. And it's just so important that we provide that to people. Second thing I'd like to say is that as a member of the Santa Fe Community Development Commission, we spend a lot of time agonizing over the lack of money for housing, the lack of availability of properties, all kinds of things. There's so many obstacles. And you guys deal with that as well. This is something that you can do now to move this process forward. Making more development options available right now will dramatically improve the opportunity to build not only affordable housing, but workforce housing, which we so desperately need in this city. So I include, I encourage you to act with haste and move this forward as quickly as possible. It's been in the works for three years. Let's get this going. Thank you so much for your time and for your service on this planning commission.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is John Eddy. I'm a member of the old Santa Fe Association. And I wanted to thank our land use director for having brought forward to you at this meeting some of the difficulty that the H Board had in regarding the code, specifically only the issues that are in chapter fourteen relating to the historic preservation in Santa Fe. The board was very concerned that they not step in the middle of this process in a way which would disrupt the process because they know how important this is to move forward. We're very grateful that a lot of this hygiene, as we refer to it, in phase one has taken place. Excuse me, in this process. But the H Board got a little tripped up when they saw some substantive changes happening, which were not supposed to be preloaded in phase one. So that's why they withheld their approval of only these items. So I look forward to how you deal with this. You folks have a really, really difficult job. I don't envy you. And I hope that this makes your job easier going forward. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the room want to make a comment? If not, we'll move to Zoom. Is anyone on Zoom?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I have three with their hands raised right now. I will allow New Mexico Home Builders Association the ability to talk. You just need to unmove yourself, put your hand down and begin to speak.
Good evening. You can hear me all right in the room?
Yes, we can.
My name is Miles Conway. I'm the CEO for the New Mexico Home Builders Association. We're part of the Federation across our nation of home builders and construction professionals representing about a hundred and forty thousand member construction home building businesses across the nation. And many, many, many of us in northern New Mexico and across our state. This phase one update checks the boxes, about four out of the ten boxes as outlined in our National Association of Home Builders Housing Policy, ten point housing plan. in our National Association of Home Builders Housing Policy, ten-point housing plan to tame shelter inflation and ease the housing affordability crisis. I want to pick up where the gentleman from the Old Santa Fe Association left off. There's no question that this Phase One update is going to make your work on the planning commission a little more fun and a little more easy as the roadmap is just a little clearer for how the development community and how builders will go about building out New Mexico and creating housing opportunities for all. I don't need to echo all of the, the issues that I know that the planning commission is well aware of about what kind of housing challenges we have before us. Only to applaud your work, thank you for these late, hard work evenings and all the research that you all do as commissioners, and we strongly urge your support to recommend to the governing body that they adopt Phase One and we'll move on to Phase Two. And I'll just leave you with one small factoid that for every one hundred homes that we build in New Mexico, perhaps homes that we would not have otherwise have built, what that will result in is around eight point seven million dollars in gross receipts, tax, and other revenue and economic activity in Santa Fe. So, you know, we, we put, we always roll out the red carpet for kind of commercial economic development, but housing is economic development. This Phase One update will make more housing development, which we sorely need more possible, and, and it will have a real upside. You know, that eight point seven million dollars in, in revenue and economic activity, GRT, that's just in year one. There are cascading effects for housing New Mexicans that carry off, carry over year after year after year. So thanks again. This is a lot of work into this Phase One update. Again, it, it does a lot to help out the development community to do what we need to do right now, build housing for our hometown sons and daughters of Santa Fe. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Carlos Gomora, Site Southwest. Please proceed.
Good evening, Chair, Cloud and Commissioners. My name is Carlos Gomora. I work on housing and zoning reforms across the state. I was a member of the Technical Advisory Working Group, and I also helped draft the affordable housing incentives that are being proposed right now in Phase One. Also note that when I was a city employee, I worked with Dan Escobal, numerous stakeholders, and Planning Commissioner Cloud in 2019 and 2020 on an original set of incentives that were unfortunately put on hold. So really happy to see that these are finally coming forward. The current intent for the affordable housing incentives right now is to allow more housing types that are naturally affordable, to remove existing barriers that disproportionately discourage affordable housing, and to properly scale the incentives that we currently give to affordable housing developments. The incentives were drafted to enable both housing at larger and smaller scales. It specifically tries to make it easier for both larger developers and smaller mom and pops. It's important to, to kind of understand, existing regulations orient the housing market to build on larger, more expensive lots with more expensive infrastructure that burdens the city's fiscal sustainability. Existing regulations encourage larger, more expensive homes versus naturally affordable housing options. Most of Santa Fe is zoned such that housing that's naturally affordable to average families is entirely impossible. Numerous housing plans, including the one for Santa Fe County, identify that Santa Fe needs more housing, needs to allow rather than prevent more affordable housing options, and that land use changes can have drastic impacts on housing options with no municipal subsidies. The incentives that are drafted here are a very small but still very meaningful step towards fixing the barriers that we have in the code. If Santa Fe decides that it is in fact committed towards making some of these changes for pro-housing zoning reform, I, I definitely encourage passing these sooner rather than later and then starting to work very diligently on the, the massive changes that could be considered for Phase Two. Thank you very much.
Diana Woods, go ahead and unmute yourself and begin.
Thank you. My name is Diana Woods. I live on the west side of Santa Fe and I have worked for years to advocate for affordable housing. I am here to strongly urge you to support the passage of Phase One of this land development code as it is written without amendments. We've waited so long to move on to Phase Two. New Mexicans cannot afford to live in New Mexico. One-third of the people who work here live somewhere else, and workers are mostly housing burdened, the ones who live here. Commuters spend thousands of dollars and hundreds of hours traveling, which hurts their wallets, their families, and the environment. It is essential that we find a way to create more affordable housing, and this update will help so much. We can make it more affordable, less confusing, less obstacles to build home for working people in Santa Fe. Let's move on to Phase Two. This update process is spectacularly commendable. Wow, so much work in such a long time. Please support the update as it is.
Anyone else on Zoom?
Madam Chair, I don't see any more hands raised.
So we'll close the public comment portion of this meeting and move on to, if there's any other comments or questions by commissioners, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to have a question of staff regarding the motion and how it would impact Historics' recommended modification. Do we have to, if we don't want to include that recommendation with the motion, simply say as submitted?
I think we're independent of Historic.
Gotcha.
So we can ignore them.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
In, in consideration of Bill Number 202417, adoption of ordinance Number 2027.
Twenty twenty-five?
Twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five. Is that enough of that, by the way, to get it into the record? Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to approve as submitted.
To make a recommendation?
Make a.
A recommendation to the governing body.
Sorry, to make a recommendation to the governing body for approval as submitted. Thank you.
Zero second.
Second.
Vice President Smith.
Want to pass him and then come back?
Member Morondo.
Yes.
Member Reland.
Yes.
Member Keppen.
Yes.
Member McReynolds.
Yes.
Member Barber.
Yes.
Member Embry.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion has passed.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to, well, case number, just for the record, case number 2025-11164. And case 20249461, which is 1372 Bolin Lane, has been postponed indefinitely. Is that correct or?
Madam Chair, that is correct.
So we're moving on to case number 20249320, 7205 Plaza Central Development Plan.
Madam Chair, I just want to inform you that it looks like we did lose Vice Chair Smith.
I think it's late where he is.
Will you hold on for just a couple minutes?
Alan, do you have your hand up for a reason?
Good evening, Chair, Cloud and Commissioners. I'm here tonight to present staff's findings on case number 20249320, a development plan for 7205 Plaza Central. My name is Alexa Hempel. I'm a senior planner with the Land Use Department and the case planner for this project. The agent is Pax Consulting and the applicant is Zeitico LLC. The applicant is requesting approval of a development plan for 165 multifamily residential units on 7.9 acres. The site is zoned C1 office and related commercial. So this project is called Zorro Blanco currently and includes a clubhouse, pool, and coffee shop in addition to the residential units. Again, it is zoned C1 and the development will be on 7.9 acres. This acreage will be created through a future lot line adjustment from the current 14.24 acre lot, which is shown in the image to the right of this slide. The red dashed line you see on that image reflects the current application, which is on 6.9 acres. However, the applicant has a condition of approval and has submitted a letter of affidavit to alter this to 7.9 acres to meet the density requirements for C1 zoning. This property is also within Phase Two C of Tierra Contenta, a planned residential community, which was annexed into the city in 1985 and master-planned in 1994 with development So as far as zoning and land use, this property is located near the southwestern corner of the city of Santa Fe limits. It is bordered by two existing roads, Plaza Central and Contenta Ridge. The property has easy access to State Highway 599, which is on the west side of the property. The surrounding uses include the planned residential community to the east, which houses much of Tierra Contenta. Tierra Contenta is a mix of housing and community amenities, including a library, school, park, and fire station. North of the property is a developed R7 district with many townhomes and condominiums. South of the property is currently vacant but is zoned C2 commercial, general commercial. And west of the property is the right-of-way for State Highway 599, and adjacent to that is I-1 zoning, which is the airport. The future land use, which is on the right image of this slide, is mostly office space, which is shown in that light purple color, and then neighborhood center in dark purple. Surrounding future land uses include a mix of residential densities, community, commercial, office space, and parks. This property is also within the suburban archaeological review district, but the 7.9 acre lot within the scope of its development plan was granted archaeological clearance as part of the Tierra Contenta subdivision. So next, here are some photos of the existing conditions of the site. The image on the left is taken standing on Plaza Central looking west at the property. There's a small paved driveway that exists and will provide access to this development. The image in the middle of the slide is standing on the eastern edge of the property near Plaza Central, again, looking west over the proposed development site. And then finally, the image on the right is looking north towards the existing R7 district that has townhomes and condominiums, and Plaza Central is on the right of that image. You also may notice from these images that the site is graded. That was done by a previous owner, and only one natural 30% or greater slope will be disturbed for utility purposes as permitted without the need for a variance. And the applicant will use passive stormwater harvesting systems on the property. Next, here are some photos of the existing neighboring properties. The left photo is facing east across Plaza Central into Tierra Contenta, and the right images are facing northeast across Contenta Ridge, where the condos, townhomes, and single-family homes exist. So with that, this is the proposed layout of the development. It houses seventeen buildings of various styles with a mix of apartment types. The specific breakdown of those apartment types include eleven studio apartments, ninety-three one-bedroom apartments, fifty-eight two-bedroom apartments, and two three-bedroom apartments. The buildings will all be in a pueblo-style architecture with stucco and a flat roof, along with a mix of balconies, garages, courtyards, and stepbacks. This development plan meets the requirements for height, proposing a maximum height of just over thirty-four feet where 36 feet is permitted. It also meets the requirements for lot coverage and open space as designed on the 6.9 acre parcel, which will only improve when the lot size is amended to the required 7.9 acres. In regard to architecture, it is of note that the originally proposed stucco color for this project led staff to recommend denial for the August 7th planning commission meeting. However, this has since been addressed, which I'll now go over in more detail. The applicant originally proposed to paint The applicant originally proposed to paint the stucco exterior predominantly colonial white with accents of yellow, green, gray and pink. Tierra Contenta's Architectural Review Committee approved this proposed design acknowledging that the design deviated from the design guidelines for Phase 2C while meeting the intent of those guidelines. However, development plans within Tierra Contenta must also go through city review, adding layers of needing to meet the requirements of Chapter 14, which imposes stricter design guidelines. Staff found that the proposed high intensity colors did not meet the minimum architectural points required for C1 projects. The Development Plan Approval Criteria Number 3, which calls for adaptable and compatible, adaptability and compatibility with properties in the vicinity, or the findings and purpose of the Architectural Design Review, which also calls for compatibility with architecture found inside historic districts. These three findings are what led to the recommendation for denial in August. Due to the postponements and noticing errors, this project has come before Planning Commission tonight. And in the time since August, the applicant has revised the predominant stucco color to Zona Rosa, which is a terracotta color. This color change brings them into compliance with the Architectural Design Points, the Development Plan Approval Criteria and the findings of the Architectural Design Review. So staff is now recommending approval of this development plan. And here is just a quick image of one of the architectural elevations to show the change in proposed color, but the applicant will go over this in more detail. So now in regards to access, traffic and parking, this project will have three entry points, the primary one being along Plaza Central with a deceleration lane. There will be a secondary entrance also along Plaza Central and one additional entry on Contenta Ridge. These three entries are shown with the red arrows on the image. This project had a traffic impact analysis completed by Tierra West and determined that all area intersections are projected to operate at Level of Service A and B. Level of Service A is defined as free flow. No approach phase is fully utilized by traffic. No vehicle waits longer than one red indication. Most vehicles do not stop and progression is extremely favorable. And Level of Service B is defined as stable flow, slight delays and occasional approach phase is fully utilized. Higher delays may occur but are insignificant. The project proposes 245 parking spaces, which is above the 238 that are required. These parking spaces will be a mix of uncovered and garage spaces and will include EV capable and ADA spaces as well. The project also includes the 12 required bicycle parking spaces. Pedestrian access will also connect to existing infrastructure along Plaza Central and Contenta Ridge. And the applicant proposes fences and yard walls along the perimeter to restrict access to the property at night. This development will connect to existing water and sewer lines along Plaza Central and Contenta Ridge. The applicant will install five fire hydrants in addition to the one that is existing on the property. Fire alarm systems and sprinklers will also be installed in all the buildings. The applicant has also submitted a photometric lighting plan and landscaping plans. And all of these components have conditions of approval to address before recording this plan and prior to building permit. Now on to affordable housing for this project. So the applicant originally submitted plans assuming compliance with the Santa Fe Homes program through a fee in lieu and included the associated 15% density bonus incentive. Staff found that this parcel is subject to the Tierra Contenta Annexation Agreement, not the Santa Fe Homes program, per 14-811-D3A, which states that the Santa Fe Homes program does not apply to a development or portion of a development that is subject to a formal written and binding agreement entered into prior to August 15th, 2005, with the city or Santa Fe County in which the signatories agreed to provide affordable housing or payment in lieu thereof. The Tierra Contenta Annexation Agreement does include affordable housing, but does not provide Tierra Contenta an option for a fee in lieu or the ability to grant density bonuses. The applicant has stated that Tierra Contenta did not impose any affordable housing requirements upon this property, likely because it was intended for office and business use and therefore they would like to opt in to the Santa Fe Homes program. However, since this property is still under the umbrella of the Tierra Contenta Annexation Agreement, staff in consultation with the city attorney's office cannot, found that we cannot apply the Santa Fe Homes program ordinance, that they are not subject to, as doing so would be arbitrary and capricious. The only way that staff in consultation with the city attorney's office found that the applicant could opt in to the Santa Fe Homes program would be through a text amendment process to Chapter 14. Given this, the applicant has submitted a notarized letter as of July 25th, 2025, adding one acre to this property to meet the density allowed in the C1 district without the Santa Fe Homes program density bonus. So with that, the applicant hosted two ENN meetings virtually on August 20th and September 30th, 2024. They also hosted two neighborhood activation meetings separately at the South Side Library in the summer of 2024. At these meetings, residents expressed a mix of excitement for addressing Santa Fe's housing needs and concerns about the project's fit with the neighborhood, including these key points: potential to attract quality retail and amenities, general support for increased housing to spur local retail, concerns about gentrification and affordable housing, skepticism about benefits to local residents, worries about property management and infrastructure. The applicant has satisfied ENN and public hearing notice requirements per 14-3.1 each. Staff has determined that this applicant satisfies the Development Plan Approval Criteria found in 14-3.8 based on the revised architectural design. All applicant and staff responses to these criteria can be found in Section 4 of the staff report. So with all that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve case number 2024-9320, 7205 Plaza Central Development Plan, subject to the conditions of approval and technical corrections outlined in Attachment A of the staff report. One motion will be required for this case, either approve or deny case number 2024-9320, 7205 Plaza Central Development Plan, subject to the conditions of approval and technical corrections found in Attachment A of the staff report. Thank you, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you. That was very concise. And Dan, breaking down the submittals of the applicant was really helpful. The third time I looked at this project. But that was helpful, breaking it down, because then you can find stuff easier. So thanks for doing that. Any clarifying questions from the commission? If not, we'll move to the applicant.
Thank you.
Look up the computer. Take care of the business of my name is Catherine Mortimer and I live at 31 in Cantata Loop in Santa Fe County, Alderado.
I just want to just let you know, the idea was not mine for the breaking up. That was Maggie Moore, so all credit goes to Maggie.
Yeah, I talked to Maggie about doing it, but thanks.
Just wanted to say.
When I was looking for the ENN in 300 and some pages, it was quite frustrating.
Get it.
We don't have to call in IT, yay. Um, good evening, Chair, Cloud and Commissioners. My name is Catherine Mortimer and I'm the agent for Zorro Blanco. I'd like to start by introducing our project team, starting with the project developer and designer, Richard Yates, who's worked in Santa Fe for over four decades and whose company, Zydeco, has been designing buildings and development in Santa Fe since the 1990s. Some of the buildings he's worked on include this Hotel Santa Fe, Palacio Azul, as well as the offices where his Zydeco was located on Sandoval Street. He lives in a home he designed in the historic district and is an advocate for walkability and inviting livable spaces. He wanted to be here this evening, but the changes in the hearing date resulted in a conflict that he was unable to change. Here with me this evening is Tom Gifford. Tom is an architect who's been working in Santa Fe for over three decades and founded his own architecture firm in 2003. Most of his work has been here in Santa Fe, but his company has overseen the construction over 2,000 multifamily homes or units. Aaron Bor is, has been working in Santa Fe as an architect for over three decades. He lived in Tierra Contenta with his partner and child for five years in a one-bedroom condominium, taking advantage of the parks, open space and trails with his young family. Carl Sommer is, has been working in Santa Fe, or is a native Santa Fe and real estate lawyer, where he's worked for over 30 years and for the last 15 years as the founding partner of Sommer, Carnes and Associates. I am the agent for this project through my firm Pax Consulting, which I started after working at the city of Santa Fe for 16 years. I want to thank Ms. Hempel for her thorough presentation of the project and how it meets all the requirements of the City Development Code. I also want to thank city staff and Tierra Contenta for all of the direction, support and getting us to this point today. I will now pass the mic on to Tom, who will describe the aspects of the project design that will realize the project goals of creating a livable, walkable community that is an asset to Tierra Contenta and the city of Santa Fe.
My name is. My name is Tom Gifford. My address is 1709 Seo de Peralta, Santa Fe, New Mexico.
Please raise your right hand. I should have sworn in the last one. State your name.
Thomas Gifford.
If you can both raise your right hand, stand and state your name and address for the record.
Thomas Gifford, 1709 Seo de Peralta.
Y'all solemnly swear and declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do this under the penalties of perjury.
Yes. Thank you, Dan. So I'd like to give a brief presentation. Alexa did a great job covering everything substantially, you know, in all the, you know, kind of the bits and pieces of the project. So I'll kind of go some, some big design concepts for you, what we were thinking.
Michael, can you come out? Oh, there it is. Never mind.
I'll just look on this. I'll, I'll do my best. So during, during the design review process with the city staff and with the public input we received, we had two community meetings, kind of informal community meetings, and we had our two ENNs. We, we made four major changes to our plans using that process. And that, one of which, and I'll describe these four quickly, but I'll show you as we walk through the project. We, because there was a need, you know, this is originally it is zoned commercial, was supposed to be office, the Village Center for Tierra Contenta. We heard that a lot, that they really wished that we had. The neighbors heard that we would like to have some commercial spaces. So we provided a 1,000 square foot amenity, commercial building. That could be a coffee shop, could be several different uses, uses, but it is outside of our, it's on the edge of our development. So it's accessible to the neighborhood, it's walkable to the neighborhood, and we have parking spaces associated with that. So we tried to, you know, kind of bring the commercial into our project. The second one was building heights. Our site is, it is zoned. It is zoned commercial, so we have the ability to go to 36 feet. We did cap it around 34 feet, so we tried to be sensitive to the neighbors. But also, oh, thank you, yeah. We'll get, yeah, perfect. Oh. Thank you, Dan. And so then, and then so we tried to reduce the heights, but also with our grading plan, we also tried our two street grades, Plaza Central and Contenta Ridge. Our two streets are our high points. So we, and we sloped towards the highway, towards the north and the west. So we made sure to really try to step down the buildings to match that grade. So we always were, you know, at Plaza Central, we're three feet lower than the grade, trying to minimize the height of buildings. Our buildings also, any three-story buildings are 50 feet and 85 feet away from that edge with a, with a nice landscape buffer. So we, when we did go to three-story, we always tried to mitigate that through landscape, through moving it away from the edge of the site. We're on our major streets, we're one, one and two-story for the most part as well. So then at Plaza Central, we heard a lot of talk about the safety of Plaza Central, the Turning Circle. And at the Turning Circle, the kids stop for buses, there's a lot of traffic through there. And so we decided, so with our, you know, what was required of us, we are completing the sidewalk infrastructure, which make it safer for people to walk, to use the Turning Circle by providing the required handicap accessible ramps. But we also put a bench there for the neighborhood so that when you're waiting on your kid to get done, you know, with school, you would be available to sit on the bench and wait nicely on our site. And then finally, as you heard, we heard the comments and we changed our project to from a white, which was the overwhelming concern of the neighborhood. At least that's what I heard. We changed it from white to the terracotta color that you'll see this evening. So these are the three things I want to go over with you, instead of kind of going through the data points, which, this is the Zorro Blanco design concepts: livability, connection and experience. These are the three most important things for us when we were designing and working on the project. We, livability, as you know, and have, and are working on is an important part of, you know, a project. And so variety in housing, shopping and recreation and transportation make lively and livable neighborhoods. And we agree with that. We believe in diverse options of housing. So in Tierra Contenta, in the near neighborhood, there's single-family, there are townhomes, and we're adding that multifamily. So there's the diversity of housing styles and types as well. We believe in mixed use, that's why we put the commercial space there. And hopefully, as the, the project gets developed, it'll be more commercial to the south as it gets closer to the Tierra Contenta interchange. Transportation opulence. We, we obviously have sidewalks and walking. We believe in biking. We believe, we believe also in public transportation as it reduces traffic and protects the environment. We've been cognizant of that. We've tried to make, throughout the site, we make connections to the walking paths, to, you know, to, to other, the existing neighborhoods, but then also making our site walkable as well and creating a sense of identity. And we, we have done that by kind of creating the, the character that we have on the site. As you can see, we tried to create a very open and welcoming site that is walkable throughout the entire site, but then also the larger connection to the neighborhoods. The next part of my presentation number two is connection. So as I said, we, we tried to connect the neighborhood. We, we want to take advantage. We, we like the site, we like the location. We want to take advantage of the Swan Park, the schools, the ability to really kind of integrate the neighborhood. This site is part of the Village Center site, it's far west, it's outlined in black. We're at the northern portion of that, you can kind of see it on the, at the upper left. There is Plaza Contenta that's at the center and you can see these red nodes. And we're, we're at that node, so we think it's a very important site. And it needs to be, you know, as I said, through neighborhood comment, we have made some concessions in terms of trying to get commercial on the site to kind of jumpstart that, you know, to make it happen there. But we also believe in. But we also believe in a robust community stations within our site. So how do you make connections? You do it through common rooms, meeting rooms. We have a 3,800 square foot community space. So we have a swimming pool on the side, so there's outdoor recreation, there's large courtyards, there are small courtyards in Plazas throughout the state. We've been very careful, but it's also about walkability and, you know, walkabout, you know, through the neighborhood and through the project. You can see, you know, the connection with the bicycle, with parking, and then it's really, my final point is about experience and how do you create meaningful experiences on the site? And we feel like we have designed this project from the inside out. So we started at the courtyards between the buildings, we made sure that the parking was zoned away from pedestrian spaces. So you can see at the perimeter of the site is where we have the, you know, through the perimeter and down the middle, we have the parking spaces close together. And then between the buildings, instead of saying they're the, the back of the building, there actually are courtyards in our spaces. We referenced, you know, Canyon Road, Isakia Madre, Plaza Sena, all the great spaces in Santa Fe and working on these areas and courtyards, trying to make it very livable. Each one of the buildings is distinct. As Alexis said, there are 17 building types. And I've done a lot of units in my days, as Kat said. And typical units are three-story stack units, stacked vertically. And what you'll see in our presentation is we have, we have buildings that are stepped, they're one, two, and three stories. They have multiple points of egress. So you can see on the floor plans on the left, which are a little light, there are basically three-story elements that are surrounded by one and two stories. The three-story elements have a centralized internal stair. But then the units that stack one, two, and three stories have separate entrances. So it's not this single point of entry, not like a larger building, it's more like an accreted form, like you'd find in the pueblo architecture, where you'd have different entrances. Everyone's not going through one door. They, you know, some people can enter directly. And you could see where you, they start to form nice courtyards. Each unit in the front has, ground floor units have front courtyards that are landscaped. And at the rear, they have, it depends, there is some sharing going on, but at the rear, there's also courtyards. We've been very clear to try to delineate personal, private spaces for each unit at the ground floor. On the second and third floors, we've also created decks and balconies, so people can experience in section as you go up, you know, to make that connection to Santa Fe, to the style, the great light and the air as well. And we have, I think what we have done is, you know, tried very hard to make a, a project that is unique to the site and to Santa Fe. It's not a monoculture of single buildings. And I'll come, you know, this is the site, so this is the site diagram with heights. Yellow is one story. Orange is two-story, and, and the lighter orange is the three-story. And so it's more centralized away from the adjacent neighborhoods, or it's pushed back, like I said, 85 feet from the edge with landscape buffer and trees. And that's as much as I would like to say about the project, and I'm happy at the end of our presentation to answer any questions for you. Aaron Borr, the developer, will come forward and speak about a sense of place. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Clough, Commissioners. Thank you very much for this opportunity to come before you tonight. I apologize for my voice, I was up singing last night. It seemed to have strained it, so apologize if it cracks. What I would like to talk about this evening, after what was a most excellent presentation by Alexa and Thomas on the technicalities of, is this idea of census space and creating place in Santa Fe that is for Santa Fe, Santa Fe. This slide is not criticism between two different styles of architecture and their approaches to solving. I just want to make that very clear. This is not to be overly critical of what merchant multifamily development is building all over the country. Recently, I was on the East Coast, I was in Arizona, and what I find is this really interesting replication of the image on the left. Why is that? Well, it exists because it's a very efficient type of building. And that efficiency essentially underscores that it's financially possible to build, and they can, they can do it efficiently, they can do it quickly. These buildings are repeated almost as, I don't want to say prefabricated, but they are ubiquitous. Essentially, the Zorro Blanco multifamily takes a different approach. But what I'd like to ask everyone tonight is, what do you think these, these two projects have in common, aside the use and their color? And I'll answer that question. These are both acceptable by the code. This, this is a really important point that I'd like to underscore this evening, is that the code allows any approach when building multifamily or projects in general. This is a visual comparison that underscores what's different here is the intent, intent that Zidico and Richard Yates is, is really pioneering. And what Richard is saying is that the building or the example on the left has three different types of spaces. Those spaces are driven by the automobile, so the automobile parking is one, the interior of the unit, and then the limited balconies that these, these types of development have. The image on the right, Zorro Blanco, has the same type of spaces. They have balconies, we have the parking space, the car is, you know, a part of our daily life, and we also have the interior of the unit. So why does this building, or why does the example on the right look so different than the one on the left? Again, it's, it's what Tom was talking about. It's essentially that it has hierarchy of spaces, meaning there's pedestrian streets where pedestrians only cross and come into contact with vehicles at one location in this tired, entire development. We think that's pretty extraordinary. So there are actually pedestrian streets internally where guests and tenants circulate free and away from the automobile. What that means, it's safer for them. It has private courtyards, which I think is a really unique aspect of this particular development. Garden floor apartment has an adjacent courtyard space, private. The second and third floor have access to the exterior through balconies. So what's interesting about the typical development on the left is it sees the future multifamily development as basically generated by the efficiency of the car. It's the car culture where it's transactional, drive up, hit that space, get out, and go to your unit, and that's your experience. That is their projection, that is the projection of the US model of multifamily. That is the, that is our future for apartment living. The ironic, the ironic aspect that Zorro Blanco sees is we see the future of multifamily not driven by the automobile, but in fact, looking to the past and using the traditional patterns of development that we find manifold in Santa Fe. This is one of the greatest examples of a walkable city, it's properly scaled for many different reasons, follow the laws of the Indy, have a plaza which is a great communal space. All of these aspirations are something that Zorro Blanco, multifamily development, is committed to. So what we find in Zorro Blanco, sorry, is a commitment to our past, to remember that going forward, we have to remember where we're from. And we think Santa Fe has some great examples of successful public spaces. I want to thank you, everyone on the board here tonight, city staff, Tierra Contenta, for your work and efforts on this project. We hope that you will consider approving this project this evening, and our team is here to stand for your questions. Thank you very much.
So we'll open it up for questions or comments by the Commissioner. Commissioner Leland.
So your guys' original submittal, I'm looking at your stuff here, you said your project valuation is at 28 million. When I do the numbers at 165 units, that comes out to 169,000 per unit. Is that going to offer a quality of construction that you would see that would withstand time?
Yes. It's, it's, we're working with the, we have a contractor onboard who has been doing basically pre-construction services, and they are working with us and have been working with us for more than a year, with Aaron, with me more than a year, with Aaron quite a bit longer than that. So we have been working with them to kind of value engineer and make changes to the plans of building efficiencies, figuring out how sourced materials to make that happen. We're slightly over, to be honest with you, we're slightly over budget at this point. We're working to get it back in.
Just noticing that similar developments that we see in Santa Fe or in neighboring communities run about 40 to 50 million at this scale.
I, I don't see that much, you know, typical unit pricing, quite that much, but yes, I could see where, you know, there are some concerns, but it's a, it's a building that's built to be held, it's not a building that's built to be turned over, so it's pretty traditional. I mean, for example, we're using, you know, spread footings instead of a turn-down footing, so it's not the least expensive way. We're ending up working on a HERS 55 building, which I didn't mention in my presentation. So they're energy efficient throughout. We've had to provide, you know, more expensive windows because of our proximity, you know, through our acoustical engineer to the highway. So, you know, there's a higher level, so we've worked kind of pros and cons to make this happen throughout the project, but, you know, we're, we're working hard to make our budget, make it happen. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Morando?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I hate to belabor the financial point, but it is surprising, I mean, basically 170K per unit with all, is that with the site?
That I believe is just the, the cost of the vertical construction, horizontal construction. So acquisitions, soft costs, you know, my cost, years, architects, that is not included in that price, that's cost of construction.
But no site, the site work as well, right?
There, there is, I don't know how exactly how it was broken out when it was given to you, but you.
This is the only reason for my question in that regard. I think it's a really well-designed project, particularly its plan, the way it nests, providing amenities the way it does, and it's really, really wonderful. I would be scared if it was built at that cost without significant site work, because that's really what's going to make that work. If you skimp on landscaping and really promoting this great plan that you've made, it's, it's not going to work. You know, the beautiful renderings, one reason they really sell is the, is the landscaping that's in there. I'm more talking to the people you're working for more than anything, and I realize that. Excuse me, my day job is creeping out. Don't skimp on site work. The, the other thing I'll just, I guess I'd like to ask is, what was, so the big change regarding the point system on the color. I, I, I get it, I could go into some questions about the points and system rundown, because I actually have a hard time seeing how it can be traced, for the reasons stated. But what I'd like to ask, I suppose, is, change of the color looks great. Do you believe the renderings reflect that color accurately?
As best we can, going from, you know, you, you're doing, working on a computer, you're printing to PDF, you're putting it in a PowerPoint, but we have a hard example, Zona Rosa, we have an address in there that we could say, this is what it looked like, you know, 20 years ago. And we certainly, you know, that's, that's our model for it. And I, and Commissioner Morando, I agree with you on the pointing system. But we felt to make this project work and to be good neighbors, we felt that change wasn't worth it.
I guess the other question would be, you had highlight colors. I'm going to say something bad and then say something good, so bear with me for the bad. I, I think the renderings really did not sell those highlight colors. It, it does not look like anything, whatever. Is the new presentation, I could not see if beyond that color there were any. Is it just the metal elements that are painted that blue and then the Zona Rosa? Correct. Is that what you would want to do? What would you want to do?
I, I think when you have a homogenous color across the air site, we, we've worked very hard, you know, 17 buildings, 24 different unit plans, you know, as Aaron said, you know, you, on a site with 164 units, I've done a lot of these, you'd have three buildings. They would look pretty similar, maybe not quite the same, but it all looked the same. I think breaking down the buildings at both scale and in size is very important, but I think color is a very important element. We, we wanted to make, we made the change for the neighborhood, and maybe there's a way that we could work with staff and maybe get a little more, because each building has its own character, its own position in courtyards and walking areas, as Aaron described so well. And if you're walking down a street, every building is not the same color. But we, we want to have a consistent overarching, you know, color for the site, but I could see where possibly there could be some accent colors that could really make the project stand out, have some variety, instead of this campus of Zona Rosa, terracotta. But it's not, not before you this evening, though.
The, the accent colors in the original submittal were very large for, for accent colors. Am I right that that is taking, your, your design is taking influence from Mexican moderns? Absolutely. So, so the current design in its color, it's got a beautiful floor plan, the color makes a lot of sense, works with the topography and all, but it seems like coming to a, array of high intensity or not colors that work within that palette would, essentially punching all the recesses would be the thing to do, and would be an easy thing to accomplish with staff. That make sense?
Absolutely. We would, we'd love to work with staff on those elements. It's just, you know, we've, as you know, we've been, you know, you've read our packet three times, we've been waiting for this meeting for a while, and so we wouldn't want to do anything to jeopardize your vote, but certainly we would work with staff to maybe work on the colors, and if necessary, come back before you, show you as well.
The only other thing I've said, I'll, I'll say here is that just in general, I think it's important for me to say, I, I truly believe the color there in those renderings is far above intensity of what that color actually looks like. So it honestly, it looks a little scarier than it actually is. I, I do like it, by the way, I'm not saying, yeah.
Did you, so I'll, but it's not on the screen. I just want to show you, there's actually a hard photo, so for you. There. So in the lower, lower, lower right-hand corner is an actual hardboard building with shade and shadow.
Zona Rosa.
That's 420 and White, you know, West San Francisco. And I agree that, you know, colors get a little, stucco has range with, you know, you know, when you're in, working in, our, yes. And Richard was the architect of the record.
Any other questions? Commissioner? Commissioner Kepin?
I was wondering if you can talk a little bit about the connectivity to like Swan Park? And kind of, I know there are spaces in between that aren't developed yet between you and then, like where, how is, how far away is it? And what part of it will you be addressing the connectivity to that if, if that's the closest park, which I believe it is.
It's the closest.
How far is it?
Let me see, so you would take, you would take basically Plaza Central, you'd go around the turns of the sidewalk the whole way. That's how you'd, that's not, oh, I'm sorry, Dan. So you'd address it that way. So you would, you basically walk or ride, and there's room for a bike lane as well. MPO has worked, we've worked with MPO, and there's some future plans for some trails that we're willing to work with. At our 7.9 acre site, that would be, we would have to dedicate a right of way for that. At the 6.9 acre site, as you know, as was submitted, but not per the letter, we don't have that requirement because it's in that one acre area.
I'd love to see that come to fruition with the other site. But I, I think this is a really good, it reminds me a little bit of Zopolo, where you guys were talking about that. Largetta's project with the colors, I agree with the color punches, I think it could, if it, it works. Very beautiful. That's all I had.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner McReynolds?
Back to Alexa's presentation and going over the part about, I saw the correspondence about the affordable housing program. So is it, sorry, I'm a relatively new commissioner. So is it my understanding that basically it was decided that there's no way to, to have them pay a fee and lose? So you then expanded the development by an acre to fit the requirements, is that accurate?
Sorry, Commissioners, you're, you're asking about how they addressed that issue rather than, okay, yeah, let's.
Yeah, so the development that they proposed on the 6.9 acres, to meet the density requirements of C1, they would be allowed 21 dwelling units per acre, which would allow them 144, I believe, on that 6.9 acres. And they had designed 165 on the 6.9 acres, assuming the compliance with the Santa Fe Homes program. But since we were unable to determine a way for them to opt into that program, they have to add the acre to meet the 21 dwelling units per acre. Does that make sense?
Yes, that does make sense, okay. And can you define a text amendment to chapter 14? Like, what would that mean? I'm just.
I think it's in what we just recommended. There is a text amendment to address this problem.
Understood. Thank you.
So, thank you, Commissioners. The text amendment isn't part of this application, but a, a text amendment process involves, I, I copied it down, so I had it. A proposal and then staff review, and then it would come before planning commission and then to governing body for final action.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barber?
Are there any plans to accommodate electric vehicle charging stations?
Absolutely. We, 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 we worked with the 2021 IECC International Energy Code. And so we have fully, we have, let's see, 15, and I'm going from memory, 15 all electric, so built in place. And then we have the same number of capable spaces. So we have the infrastructure, not the, you know, the transformer, we have the conduit that's ready to go for another 15. So yes, so there.
So 30 total.
15, but. 15 actual, and then you know how they said that there's two rules? So there's the actuals, and then there's another 15 that are capable. So the transformers would be sized to do them, but we don't have to put them in right now.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kepin?
Just a quick follow-up to Commissioner Barber, what about charging for electric bikes? Did you consider that at all for your residents, since they're so popular now?
We, we have outlets outside of the unit and then most likely, you know, the, the cost of the electric bike means you're probably going to put it inside the unit. You're not going to leave it outside.
Right.
And so you'll probably charge on one of the units. But let's say in a courtyard, there are outlets associated to your unit, so you'd be charged for electricity that you could charge your bike in.
So to that point, folks that are living on the second and third floors of these units are going to have a heck of a time getting bike that be up into their units. Was there any, just in thinking about sustainability and, and the electric vehicles and stuff, is there any consideration for, like, we were talking about almost like a parking area, a protected parking area, garage almost, that tenants could either rent or utilize where they could store an electric bike safely and charge it as an amenity or something like that?
We, we do have onsite, we have paid storage. So there's a building that, you know, to, in order to kind of meet the grade on the site, we actually have a building that has a 10-foot retaining wall. So from, from basically looking from the east, it looks like a two-story building, and from the west, it's three stories, so it's kind of a step out. There are storage units there, and certainly that's something I could bring to ownership, because you're right. You know, people, you know, the, the electric bikes are heavy, they're almost 75 pounds. I don't think you're going to carry them up the stairs, I even, I wouldn't try to do that. But in, you know, ground floor, you would do it. So maybe there's a way we could take one of those storage units or two of those storage units, make a bike, bike corral with some charging for the people in the upper units. It's, I don't think it's a bad idea. And I, I think with the use, and the more I see them every day I walk, they're everywhere, so yes.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point. Any other comments, questions? If not, we'll all entertain a motion. I always forget that, no one's here. But just in case, just in case, if anyone from the public would like to make a comment on this proposed project, please come forward.
Never been to one of these before, just moved back to Santa Fe, I have to explain my family. My name is Samantha Secular. Samantha Secular, I live at 4405 Contenta Ridge.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury?
Yes.
Proceed.
So when I first heard about this project, I was opposed. I just purchased 4405 Contenta Ridge, it'll look directly at all of this. I've been trying to see some of the upsides. Obviously, I was also in opposition of the colonial white Barbie Minecraft village that it would have looked like. I, I'm sorry about that, but it really did look like that. And this is coming from a millennial. So I have some questions about the more lived experience of the traffic impact in the area. Contenta Ridge in particular is a very narrow street and it has a curve. So when you try to make a right in there and there's, there are cars parked on the side, it's very, very difficult already to maneuver. And I'm a little bit worried about how it's going to impact the street on that side, since there is a proposed access point on just an incredibly narrow road, such a narrow road that there isn't a bike lane on it. There are just sidewalks and we should have the bikes in the bike lane. So I've spoken with my neighbors, they're all pretty opposed, they're not very big fan of this. But as somebody younger, I can understand us wanting to add to this idea of creating more affordable housing. That's huge and that has been huge for me. So I think I am still really skeptical. I looked at the traffic impact report, I think it was from 2023, was that, was it? It, it doesn't seem to be reflective of what's currently happening. I know there's been more development by Homewise in the area. I'm also just, yeah, I'm, I'm very skeptical about the road situation and wondering why there has to be anywhere on Contenta Ridge as it is. So that's one thing. The coffee shop that's been proposed, I want to make sure that that's a bit more of a promise than an aspirational, almost marketing thing. Like, oh, the neighbors will be more interested because there's a coffee shop. If it's a 1,000 square foot space, I would love if there was some sort of pledge that it would be used for the community, because we are giving up views, the traffic is going to increase. It is a concern that it's going to be 164, 165 units, and we've had a very quiet experience, little light pollution. It's really pleasant out there. So to feel like this is a positive thing, that's something that I question. And yeah, so let me see, I think I had one more thing. Yeah, so I am curious about the three stories and how many places. I love the staggering of the two and the three story. But if this is being sold as like a, or presented as something that's got, it's great for pedestrians, it's great within the property. I am, yeah, worried about Contenta Ridge in particular and also just, I mean, this whole neighborhood coffee shop thing. Not sure I really understand where the line is, since I was also told that if it wasn't leased, that it would be turned into an apartment. So I would love to hear some assurance on that. So that's all I have to say about it. Do I just go sit down now? Okay.
Any other public comment? And anyone on Zoom?
Madam Chair, I don't see anybody with, oh, hold on. No, it went down. I don't see anybody with their names raised. Oh, it came back up. Barry Sekular, go ahead and unmute yourself and proceed.
Okay.
I need to swear you in, though.
Okay, go for it.
Please raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record.
Barry Sekular, 1854 Bandelier Court.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury?
Absolutely.
Please proceed.
Well, I helped Samantha, we, Samantha's my daughter, so the only person there, I guess, in the audience, and I'm online watching this proceeding. I have, looking at the diagram, that was an impossible to determine which orange was the building that is, I guess, the more circular or the one facing Contenta Ridge. Which is, so if that building is a three-story building, then where are the setbacks and drops and making that building interesting? Or is that build, would they just decide that Contenta Ridge is like, oh, they won't care? And then put a full three-story building over there? That is the antithesis of what you're trying to create, because you showed elevations having occasional one stories, occasional two stories, three stories. So can, maybe you can tell me about that, that particular building that's right next to the entrance and the parking area on Contenta Ridge? And the other question I have is, you were talking about elevations that there was some concession made, because there may be some grading down three feet. And does that mean that the effect on the actual land right now on the ridge, this ridge top is 31 feet? So, or did, is that, am I, is that, am I understanding that wrong? And, uh, okay, I guess those are my two main questions right now.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
Madam Chair, I don't see anybody else's hand raised.
And anyone else here in chambers wanting to make a comment? If not, we'll close the public portion of this hearing. And does the applicant want to respond to any of those questions?
Regarding, regarding the height, you know, I, I'll go in reverse order for the questions. It is not a 31-foot tall building, they're 34. It was, when I said it was three feet lower than the street grade, it's relative to the street. So, you know, it, it relatively, if you're standing on the street, it's three feet lower than the street, but it's still a 34-foot tall building. That building at its closest point, and I can, maybe Kat can help me with that, that building with its closest point is at, at a minimum 85 feet away with landscape and a solid six-foot wall, because, because code requires that you shield parking from the street. So it's not necessarily on the street, it is adjacent to the street, but we set it back to make that happen. And that building has garages on the ground floor. So when, when Alexa said that we had some units with surface parking garage, that's one of the buildings with garage. And it isn't as effective when you're trying to do garage units. It's when you do garage units, it's, you know, it's not effective to step or have a garage without a unit above. That, that's the cause of that. So we have, you know, 17 different buildings, each one's different. Our development plan's clear, that is a three-story building, you know, in that location. I think I covered both of those questions, which is relative, relative height to grade and the, the nature of that building.
Thank you.
So with respect to the coffee shop, what's really interesting about Richard Gates is he had suggested, let's do a coffee shop. Two and a half, started. And at that time, we thought that. So essentially Catherine's help and the team, we identified a certain amount of. It's, it's one of the interesting things that I think Richard generally brings to his project, which is wanting that interaction, wanting secondary type, secondary form of experience that broadens the experience of living. I think he's right. I think that the time for housing that is a monotype, that is a standalone by itself, is over. We need to do better in integrating commercial spaces and retail into our housing, so we can have the rich variety that we all see and experience in other European cities is where American cities have to develop interesting, walkable experience for the resident. Let's have more of it.
Thank you. Are we ready for a motion?
Madam Chair, would like to make a motion.
Proceed.
In case 2024-9320 for 7205 Plaza Central Development Plan, I would like to move, recommend approval to the governing body.
We approve.
Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, this is, this is a final here, it's just development plan approval.
Ending on this one.
To, I would like to recommend approval. However, with a, with an amendment to the technical corrections, that that the, that the development plan be allowed to incorporate highlight colors compatible with the design intent as long as the project still meets the point system.
Madam Chair, we would have to analyze that in order to identify whether something like that requires a variance or not. Since we, the applicant has not presented a variance to any of the point systems or variance to the standards relevant to 1483 of the development plan standards. So we analyzed this both for points and for compatibility to the development plan standards. And I'm not quite sure whether or not we would be able to deviate from that without a variance.
Could the motion just state that we refer it to allow the applicant to work with staff to determine whether that would be allowed?
You, Madam Chair, there are accent colors permitted. Chapter 14 does identify, and I'll read it out, says that the governing body finds that in order for Santa Fe's urban townscape to be one visual cohesion and identify rather than visual clutter and anonymity. Anonymity, I can't even pronounce that word. Architecture outside the historic district. architecture outside the historic districts must possess a degree of compatibility with architecture inside the historic district. So, you know, we do, when we look at all of the points and architecture and all of these buildings, it goes through a team effort from the the senior planner to the planner manager to the um, assistant land use director, and then finally to the land use director and our legal department works on these. So we 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 don't really provide those deviations unless the applicant makes those application choices so that we can advertise them appropriately on the agenda. Now, we do allow for some accent colors on this and we don't mind working with the applicant. It wouldn't require a deviation from the conditions of approval. It just requires approval from uh, the department in compliance with those standards.
That's what I was saying. Yes.
I, Madam Chair, I I would still disagree. Um, the the recommendation, our recommendation for approval is finding if or not is in our vote, whether it's compatible. That's part of our approval criteria. And that's actually what staff has written up here.
But I think the problem is um, that in, it hasn't been on this agenda is the problem.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may, uh, for the record, Carl Summer, I I was sworn in. Um, just as a recommendation, we appreciate uh, the desire to provide that variety and that accent for the very reasons that uh, Commissioner indicated. And the condition being that we could work with staff to determine whether or not there is a compatibility. The the problem that we might run into is that staff might say, well, you don't meet the point standards. We might have very serious disagreement about that. And what I'm thinking is, is if the condition were we work with staff and if there's a disagreement, the applicant can bring it back to you all on that subject of compatibility and whether it meets the point system because uh, staff and and the uh, applicant are not the end all be all of that analysis. You all are. So if the condition were to read, work with staff on accent colors, if there is a disagreement, uh, the applicant can refer it back to us for a determination, both as compatibility and meeting the point standard. And then we could resolve it that way.
Dan?
So I don't think that we would argue that condition. However, it does keep the application in a process. Because if there is a disagreement, now we have to put you on an agenda. We have to make it, we have to go through a report writing. I mean, it it's not, it's not something that I think that the applicant wants to stay in limbo with, but if if you want to.
It's up to them. They can make the decision it, whether they want to come back or not. I mean, they can judge, is it worth it? Um, probably for color, not. Um, but it's up to them to make that decision. So I think that's okay.
On the project, while that gets decided, we wouldn't be stuck. You could get a permit. We could come back. I mean, there were a lot, we could do a lot of work. Um, it will not hold us up. And uh, Chair, you're correct. It's our, our, if it was our option. But there's a lot that happened while that that process is being decided.
So are, um, I guess my question is, are we modifying a condition or are we just leaving it up to basic discussion?
We are modifying a condition, I believe, Madam Chair. Um, and the condition, um, I'm going to state it and then um, I probably want the applicant and staff to let me know what they think about it. Uh, the con, the condition would be that um, the architectural points, condition of approval um, would allow the applicant to work with staff on the use of highlight colors that both find compatible um, with the design and the surrounding content. And if applicant and staff disagree, the applicant can come back to the commission to decide on the matter.
So I think we see us again.
Dan, are you okay with that?
I'm fine.
Okay. Is there a second? Second.
Commissioner Rieland?
Yes.
Commissioner Kepin?
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner Embry?
Yes.
Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion has passed.
Thank you. Thanks. Good presentation. Okay, um, any matters from the commission? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.